Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, welcome to the June 5, 2013 Lorain County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Commissioner Kukowski has our dog this morning.
I can't believe somebody hasn't come looking for her. Seems like a really nice dog. We're saying it's a beagle mix, I'm not really sure. We have a lot of dogs at the dog kennel, so if we really need your help, if you're looking for a dog, let that be the first place that you go to look. We have all kinds of dogs available, you could check us out on our website if you would like to just do that instead of coming down prior to. You could take them out, walk them around, see if it'd be a good fit for you, and if you have a family, it'd be a nice addition. So come on down to the dog kennel and pick up a dog, we need your help. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Kukowski. Madam Clerk?
Today we have a proclamation proclaiming June 15 as World Elder Abuse Awareness. We have a budget hearing on Veterans Service Commission, and then we also have a presentation on the 911 warrants office.
Can we do the proclamation now? Do it first?
Is Kathy here?
I'll read it, if she comes, she can come up and get it. "In the matter of proclaiming June 15, 2013, as World Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lorain County, Ohio. Whereas Lorain County seniors are valued members of our society, and it is our collective responsibility to ensure that the alive safely and with dignity, and whereas abuse of older people is a tragedy inflicted on vulnerable seniors and ever-increasing problem in today's society that crosses all socioeconomic boundaries. And whereas combating abuse of older people will improve the quality of life for all seniors across the country and will allow seniors to continue to live as independently as possible and contribute to the life of vibrancy of Lorain County, and whereas Lorain County seniors are guaranteed that they have, they will be treated with respect and dignity to enable them to continue to serve as leaders, mentors, volunteers, and important and active members of this community. And whereas we are all responsible for building safer communities for Lorain County seniors, and whereas the well-being of Lorain County seniors is the interest of all and further adds to the well-being of Ohio communities. Now therefore be it be resolved by the Lorain County Board of Commissioners of Lorain County, Ohio, that we hereby proclaim June 15, 2013, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day and encourage all Lorain County citizens to recognize and celebrate the accomplishments of its seniors in Lorain County, Ohio. Witness our signatures this 5th day of June 2013, Lori Kukowski, Ted Kahlo, and Tom Williams."
I guess Kristin's gonna come up. [inaudible] Kathy was unable to make it today. I'm Kristin Whiteman, I'm from Lorain County Job and Family Services. We appreciate your support in this matter as it is of high concern to our county, and I will take this back to her and give all of your best regards. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Madam Clerk?
Do you want me to do the resolutions then?
Yep.
Under Resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Advances repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorain County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have, in my possession, a few labor contracts that have been concluded that we need to review. We don't necessarily need to vote on them today, but we can, but I want to go over them with you with the executive summaries. One of them is the MRDD contract, the other is the county recorders' contract. And also I have potential hires at WDA that I wish to talk with the Board about. Those subjects are allowable for executive session discussion, so it acts as a conclusion of our regular Board meetings. Today we go into executive session and talk about those personnel items that I've identified. Thank you.
Approved with the reading of the minutes of May 29?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development authorized administrator execute necessary documents on leasing of two four-wheel-drive pickup trucks and two passenger vans to be paid from the account 3412 Watershed Invasive Vegetation Control Federal.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, Mr. Cordez, this is all the federal dollars for the watershed cleanup on the Black River in Lorain, correct? This is not general fund money?
No general fund money, Commissioner. We're putting a lot of people to work from WDA, eradicating invasive species along the Black River. It's gonna inject a nice amount of federal dollars into our community, we're just a little bit behind on the vehicles, so we need to be able to move very fluidly, that's why we're asking for this authorization.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family authorized purchase service agreements with various transportation companies to provide non-emergency medical for state fiscal year 14, effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Authorized directory execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form and amend for changes in program and content and increased value. One, provide a ride Cleveland Mountain Act to exceed 400,000, and life care wheelchair services Illyria the Mountain Act to exceed 650,000.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Transit recommend changes to the Cleveland route.
Mr. Cordez, could you update us and the public on some of your findings and what you've been working on?
This is, I have Pam here, and this is, I think, gonna be a bit of an extensive discussion, if you may want to get through the rest of your agenda, and then we can go into that in case somebody's here for agenda items, because I want her to speak a little bit on that, then we need to go over some data that we-
I'll put it at the end of the agenda, then.
Okay, you know, we briefed through some of it individually, and then there was more questions, so I think there's gonna be more questions on what we want to do, and I don't want to delay anybody that's here for a particular action on the agenda.
Okay with the Board to hold it till after we finish the agenda items and the hearings?
Sure.
After the hearing, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Under Domestic Relations, approve contract with Trinity Services Division to provide food service for the detention home and residential complex effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, containing a 90-day cancellation clause, and the price per meal is set a number of meals served, and has a 2.7% inflationary food price index included.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve an enter and LPA agreement with ODOT for Jones Road Bridge Replacement Project to administer the design qualification of bidders, competitive bid letting, construction inspection of project. Authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve an enter and Engineering Services Agreement with Burgess and Nipple, Inc., Painesville, in amount of 215,200 to provide environmental studies, detailed design services, and right-of-way plans for the Jones Road Bridge Replacement Project in Penfield Township, and will be paid from the Engineers' Project Bridge Account. Authorized engineer to execute on behalf of the Board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Award contract to Carbo paving stow in the amount of 684,557.32 for Grafton River surfacing project in Carlisle, a 2.24-mile section of Grafton Road from State Route 57 to Township Line. Seven birds were received on May 21st, this being the most responsive complying with specifications, and the engineers estimate was 881,204. Work will be completed on or before November 30, and will utilize bore construction, American roadway logistics, and lake area construction as subcontract, but no substitutions, and will be paid 80% federal and 20% OPWC.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Reject the bids received May 30, overestimate and readvertise for bids for Cali Road Ee Township Resurfacing Project. This is 2.67 miles from State Route 82 to Crocker Road, notice being the chronic on June 7 and 14, and open at 2:00 p.m. on June 25.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kahlo?
Aye.
Ms. Kousky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
You just want to go into-
Well, we've got about five minutes, but Jody Burrell is here, the court administrator for domestic, and she wanted to talk about number eight under correspondence. Jody, would you like to join us and talk about these? Whoa, you okay? Almost like Pat Riley at Lorain City Hall the other night.
Well, he fell?
He fell. Yeah, his chair rolled off. Yeah, I was watching Rick Payerton's tweets the other night.
This is the one I talked to you about, you said you hadn't gotten-
Right, it was in the Board's-
No, we didn't get-
...
Right, we didn't get it direct to us.
It went in-
Did you get a copy of the correspondence I sent? Okay. At this point, we really are just looking for authorization to seek bids, to see what the cost might be to build out the future space that we have on our second floor. There's future space on the second floor of the Justice Center, four, three hearing rooms. The number of our magistrates have exceeded the number of hearing rooms that we currently have. It's created space issues, obviously. In addition to that, General Division, I know, has space issues of their own, so Tim Louie and I have been talking about possibly collaborating with them to address those space issues. He has a couple of magistrates as well that he's looking to possibly relocate. So, we really have no idea at this point what that cost would be, whether it would be conducive to building out that space or not, but we just wanted to kind of start the process and, you know, just start to get some bids to see what that might be.
Well, I had spoken to Mr. Cordez on this when he was telling me about it. Has there been additional magistrates added to the Court of Common Pleas in domestic relations from what was there?
Originally?
Or is this reassigning, or what's-
It's reassignment, right. We each, no new magistrates have been added. Each judge has three personal magistrates, and then we have two, well, we have three court magistrates who are also part of the court. One is out of the detention home most of the time, and then two others under our domestic support, child support contract. What's happened, though, is as we've had two new judges come in and take office, they are utilizing their magistrates a little bit differently from the way the magistrates were originally utilized when we first came into the building. So all nine of the judge's personal staff magistrates, as well as our two court staff magistrates, have full dockets, full-time dockets, that require them to be on the record for hearings, and, I mean, you know, require the use of hearing rooms on a daily basis. And so even with our existing magistrates, we have 10 hearing rooms, and that includes one hearing room that we had taken previously, what was a conference room, and converted that into a hearing room a couple of years ago, in order to attempt to accommodate the number of magistrates that we have. But now, we, you know, with 11 magistrates, 10 hearing rooms, we are just simply one hearing room short. And so they've been doing what they can to try to work together, to work around that, but it becomes very difficult because, you know, under the Supreme Court guidelines, we have, obviously, certain deadlines in which we need to conclude our cases, and their dockets are very full, you know, on a daily basis with hearings. So, you know, they've been doing the best they can to work together, but it's been a challenge.
So what's the cooperative agreement with the Court of Common Pleas, then? If you need the hearing rooms for your staff?
Well, if we, if it's not cost prohibitive to build out those three additional hearing room spaces between, the Common Pleas Court has two foreclosure magistrates, we have 11 magistrates who are on our floor full-time, plus our detention home magistrate comes over once a week to do our truancy court. So between those, we would have, on any given day, 14 magistrates, but if we build out those three rooms, we'll be able to accommodate all of the magistrates then.
So the foreclosure magistrates would then go into these hearing rooms also?
That would be the idea.
Where are they currently located at?
They're currently on the fourth floor.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
What about, I was just curious, what about if we use the old courthouse, actually do some renovations there? We talked about moving the people from the old Columbia Gas building, use that money, do the renovations, we can consolidate buildings, and we have plenty of space at the old courthouse. And you have the security there, because you have probate there as well.
Over at the old courthouse?
We would be able to help renovate it, an old building, get you the space that you need, and consolidate buildings as well.
For our current magistrates, or for General Division's magistrates, I guess, our current magistrates, I think it would be difficult to put them in another building since all of our other support staff is, you know, obviously there in our building. We have assignment commissioners, clerks, you know, on a daily basis. Our magistrates need the use of our support staff to, obviously, check in people as they arrive for hearings, depending on the type of hearing, when they're juvenile court hearings. There's also other clerk duties sometimes that are involved in interviewing those folks ahead of time and getting ready, you know, preparing the file for the magistrate. So if we relocated the magistrates to another building, then that would, there would also be a cost involved in relocating other probably support staff or making them available over there. I don't know, I mean, we could certainly explore that.
I just know we have a building that's underutilized, and it's decaying, so part of it, putting some people in there, utilizing the room that we have, that we were not building out, a new floor.
Sure.
While we have vacant rooms, though.
We'd be open to taking a look at that space as well and seeing if there might be some way to utilize that. I don't know if that, I don't know. I know that also, Tim Louie had indicated that General Division may have some funds, I don't know how much or to what extent, but they may have some funds available to assist with the build-out, but obviously, a lot of that depends on what the cost would even be, so.
Mr. Cordez, any comments? Has Karen Davis looked at this, since we've seen the correspondence?
Well, we can take a look. We can take a look at it. This is the first correspondence. As I addressed to you during the week, we have all the plates for the building. There was build-out space on the second floor, so there was anticipation, and of course, hopefully, I'll be long retired before this war is fought, but we have a whole fifth floor. That's, we put a little foresight into the fact that the building needed to go 25, 30, 40 years into the future, so we added a floor when we had an opportunity, so there's plenty of room. We'll take a look at it, we'll get a couple quotes, we'll work with Jody. We've established a pretty good working relationship since she's come on board, so I'll have that set into motion, and then we can look at the cost data from there and go forward. Commissioner, with regard to the old courthouse, it sounds like a really good idea, but the logistics-
Right.
-could be fairly challenging. The technology that we're using in the Justice Center isn't really available over in the old courthouse with the recordings and the technology they use. Now, I'm not saying it couldn't be extended to there, but it could be, it could get very expensive.
Could be cost prohibitive.
Because they do use all that recording equipment, right?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, our magistrate, we don't have court reporters, obviously, on the second floor, so our magistrates utilize a digital recording system, which is obviously overseen by the county-
And it's a centralized system for the justice.
Correct.
I thought the probate was actually using recording.
Well, it depends, it varies in the courts what they're using. There's a lot of technology available, some use a little more than others, how they feel comfortable, but I'm almost certain all the magistrates use that recording system, and we maintain that, so having to locate some of that technology into the older courthouse, again, it could, it could get, it could get quite expensive.
Well, didn't we do an upgrade to that system, a year, year and a half ago, we had to put money, because it was seven, eight years old?
Well, we upgraded some stuff, and I still need quite a bit of money to upgrade a few other things, like our voicemail platform that they said is going to turn itself off in January 14, remember that? You've been told.
Multiple times.
So, there's a couple things. I'd really like to take a look at the technology issues, which you, at the same time, we look at the build-out, because we are reaching some life expectancy, and it's not that Mr. Smith doesn't routinely send me emails and say, "Give me money," you know, "I'm patching things together," so why don't we look at this as a comprehensive package at the same time?
That doesn't include Job and Family Services, they've been having a lot of issues there with their recording system as far as being able to go back and do employee reviews.
Well, I think, I think that they actually don't keep that. I don't think there's anything wrong with the system, I think they only keep-
They're telling me that there's something wrong with the-
I don't think so, I'll talk to them real quick, I think they only keep 30 or 60 days.
Because they keep asking, have you listened to the calls?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Jody, I'll get what you, I'm getting ready to leave tomorrow, but I'll sit the wheels in motion today, and I'll give you a buzz.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
It's now 9:50, would we like to go into our public hearing required by revised code to review the Veterans Services Commission's budget? Mr. Stone, Mr. Mackin, Mr. Batunis, Mr. Childers, welcome this morning. It's your first time, Terry, welcome.
Thank you, sir. Morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Terry Stone, I'm the new Executive Director of Lorain County Veterans Service Office. We submitted our budget according to law and what we were supposed to do, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have about the dollar amounts that we're asking for.
Well, just a few questions. I know our Budget Director met with you and a couple members of the Commission the other day.
Yes, sir.
And we've had a few significant changes, and just so you can explain it to the public, because your budget has gone up approximately $400,000. You have a furniture and fixture increase, and speaking with Lisa, that was explained as if there's new locations, and we have received a letter from the Commission and yourself about relocating the offices.
Yes, sir. If we do relocate the offices, just about all the equipment that we're currently using, the desks, chairs, and everything else belong to the building that they're in right now, and we would probably end up having to purchase some furnishings and furniture and stuff to start out with if we did change locations.
Mr. Cordez, I'm looking at you.
Well, you know the answer, it's always, so-
It's ourselves, the Commissioners own everything.
Right.
I mean, that's just how it is, so it doesn't, it doesn't belong to the building, it still belongs to the Board.
Yeah, but you know-
Correct. So it can be moved.
This stuff isn't that new.
Okay, it is older.
And there's probably a couple three-legged chairs that are pretty fresh, so if, I would suggest that if they move, and I'm, we're gonna talk about that, some space issues, that you get some furniture that's more conducive to a new location, I think it makes some sense. It's, you know, 10, 15-year stuff, it's a one-time expenditure.
We also had a increase in the contract services that were explained, providing transportation from veterans to medical appointments. Do we have any numbers on that? Because in the past, we'd received from the Board the amount of trips that had been taken.
Yes, sir, and I neglected to grab that this morning, but I do know, I can tell you for a fact that our ridership with our provider ride and our contracted services between dialysis, non-ambulatory patients that we can't handle through our regular means of transportation is increasing, and I'm looking right now, at the end of the year, hopefully having enough money in that current budget to cover all the costs with the way the trend's been going. Also the fact that next year, in 2014, when the Afghanistan war winds down, I'm looking at the possibility of having a large influx of other patients that we're going to have to utilize that service for, whether it be amputee patients, dialysis patients, severely injured or handicapped patients that we can't transport with our current means of transportation.
How are the new vehicles doing for you that we got last year?
The new, new vehicles are working out great.
That's helping with our transportation costs?
Yes, sir. Ridership, ridership to the Wade Park Parma is going up, because we've gone to that 14-passenger bus, and it's working out real well.
There was also a question under your professional services for preparation and working of the Veterans Court. The Commissioners and Judge Walther have already worked out an agreement that the funding would come from the general fund, here there'd be no need for it out of Veteran Services budget.
Yeah, that's one that I've seen in there, that's been in there for a couple years now, before I became involved, and it doesn't look like it's been utilized. I wasn't even quite sure exactly what it was used for, but Ms. Hobart explained to me what it was used for, and I have no problem with dropping that one out.
Okay, all right, then, can we delete that, then, Lisa? It was $50,000. They haven't spent a dime of it out of there, and there was $50,000 for the 2014 request, and there's really no need for it if we're funding it with Judge Walther and working with the grant process, correct?
Correct.
Relief allowance, again, you just mentioned the Afghanistan returning troops.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a number of how many of those might be.
Not currently, no, but again, I went through the first, the previous quarter of what we've spent so far in our relief allowances, and this year, we had budgeted $450,000. At the current rate of what we're going through right now, we're looking at a possibility by the end of this year of needing $675,000, just to cover the current trend that is going at right now as far as financial assistance, and we also wanted to increase some of our financial assistance to the veterans by possibly adding some money in there for helping them with costs for training, for books and things that aren't covered by different grants and things that they can get, plus emergency dental care. One thing the VA does not handle is dental care for veterans. If we can set up something to where, if we've got a veteran that's got a bad tooth, and he's already on financial assistance, he has no place to go and no way of paying for that dental care. I'd like to be able to start looking at it, working up a policy through our office to be able to provide a service for that, to where we would work directly with, say, a dental college or something that would be economical, but yet still get the veterans the help that they need as far as dental care.
I have a question regards to the training. Don't we have the cooperative agreements in regards to our employment network and workforce development?
We do, and Veteran Services works very well with our people over at the One Stop, but there's times that they may not be eligible as a, as a "we" recipient for an ITA, so there's some additional services that Veterans Services can give them that we can't over at WDA. So, it's a good cooperative, it works well together.
Correct, yeah. There are some areas where they could not, you know, get it from anywhere else, so I'd like to be able to have the funds to be able to offer those kinds of services.
Yeah, I think Terry offers last resort funds. We usually work them through everything else first over at the One Stop with training and employment issues, and then if they're not eligible for that, then they can provide some additional services that we're not allowed to. So, that's why it all mingles together over there.
I just want to make sure. I think it's good to have a discussion, especially you're going to be here with us for a while, and-
I hope so.
The new dialogue, I'm assuming the new dialogue, so we're talking this out. A lot of times, because I basically, by law, we can't revise this anyway. We can just talk, but we can review it and then approve, so that's why the dialogue's coming.
Yeah, and don't forget, the state's got the Gold Star standing out for veterans for receiving workforce assistance, and there's multiple agencies that are tasked to work towards the objective of providing services that are a couple notches above. It's a requirement. We didn't establish it, it's been established by the state, so sometimes there's needs that need to be filled in various ways.
Just a couple more line items, Terry, and I'll let the rest of the Board have you.
Not a problem, sir.
Conference expenses for 2014 to create outreach programs for the veterans, or is that the training for the Board members?
No, sir, that's to create outreach programs for the veterans, because our training and stuff for our staff is covered under staff training. What we're looking at is the fact that we have so many veterans in outlying areas, Amherst, Devon, La Grange, Oberlin, New Russia Township, all the southern areas. We have the staff that we could send somebody down there, but if you're going to do a day-long seminar on veterans' benefits or to train some of the Veteran Service Officers at the different VSOs in those areas, so they're giving veterans the help that they need to get them in the right direction to come to our office. That cost would be used to cover if we had to rent a hall, say, a FAW hall to hold a day seminar, if we wanted to supply food for functions like that, if we wanted to supply food for any other outreach where there's a whole bunch of veterans that we have out there that are going to be in one place, so we can approach them, give them the information they need, but we need the funds, and we have no other place to take that out of in order to be able to do that.
All right, that in falls within the guidelines. Like they always said, if you feed them, they'll come.
Yes, sir.
And one other issue that probably I would think doesn't need to be in there is the building lease, office leasing, line item of $24,000, because the county sets the location for the veterans, working with the Veteran Service Commission, but also it's a global account, we pay that out. I believe Lisa explained that, so would that be a problem?
Yes, sir, she, yeah, she explained it to me. I had put it in there because we had been approached with a proposal to relocate our office to somewhere that wanted to charge, you know, rent, but then I was told that that would come out of the general fund anyway, and that the County Commissioners are in charge of that, so.
So, we could take that off of the budget at that point?
Yes, sir.
So, currently, we could remove the $50,000 in Professional Services and the $24,000 in the building rent line item?
Yes, sir.
And that would be okay with the Commission and with you, Terry?
Yes, sir.
What's that revised number?
Seventy-four thousand?
Yeah, minus from the budget total, which would put us somewhere around 1.775 or whatever. I've covered my in. Board?
Well, I wanted to go back to, if we're going to take out the building lease, I would like to take out the furniture and fixtures for now, and then if you do find a location, we can always come back and talk about it. Would that be an issue, taking out the $35,000 for now?
No, sir, I wouldn't, with, you know, the intent that if we did run into a problem, I would like to be able to come back to the Board and ask for more money.
Right.
Which you have the ability to do, Terry.
Yes, sir.
And then, I'm going to go back to the contract services. Lisa, I got your sheet up here. I'm looking at contract services. I have one sheet that's got a budget of $179,500, and then on the spreadsheet, it says the budget was $125,000.
For 2013?
Yeah.
That's a combination of all, that includes their utilities and their internet service. That's a loop together for all contract services.
She said it's a combination of utilities, internet services, everything together with that. Now, taking a look at that, you're, as of March 31st, or I'm sorry, May 31st, you spent fifteen, about $50,000. The highest amount that you've gone up to is just under $102,000. I think $270,000 is a little aggressive in preparation, and again, if we do get the numbers that are coming back that you anticipate, you can always come back and revisit. What I would like to do is actually take, increase that $125 for what you had this year, and put it at $180 for 2014.
That is their choice, Tom. That's a suggestion.
I'm asking on that, because I do believe it's a little aggressive going at the $270,000, considering, looking at the years, even with the internet and utilities, your contract service was at $102,000 max.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I think our Budget Director has a comment to make.
That does include the $50,000.
Lisa.
You know the little-
It's a co-starring role right now, Terry. It's a co-star now.
Yes, I have no problem.
That amount, that figure does include the $50,000 for the Professional Services that we're going to be zeroing out.
Okay.
Okay, just to clarify.
All right, so even with that, yeah, it's still at, you had $180,000 with that $50,000 in there, so, again, 2012, the max that you spent was $101,812. I would like to see that, that $270 at least reduced. If you do get the numbers and you have them coming, by all means, come back to us, and we can go through and readjust it, but I think it's a, kind of a aggressive request on that.
Well, I'm planning a very aggressive campaign for 2014 to let veterans know that we're here, and we're here to serve them, and to offer as much services to them as we can. So, I respectfully would like to see it stay the same.
No disrespect, I'm just looking, you're saying that you're going as an aggressive campaign?
Yes, sir.
For entire county?
Yes, sir.
On $20,000 for your printing and advertising?
Yes, sir. We're bringing a lot of that in-house, too, to try to cut down on some of the costs.
I mean, we talked to other, I talked to veterans and that, I mean, if you actually increase the advertising and printing, I think that would be more effective to go up, because right now, you're reaching about 5,000 veterans out of the 28,000 that are here.
Probably, yeah.
You're serving 5,000 or just reaching 5,000?
We're probably reaching close to 5,000. I mean, we've added, you know, we're on three radio stations currently now throughout the rest of the year. We're advertising on the county sign, advertising as many of the papers that go to the outlying areas as I possibly can. With the same token, watching, you know, make sure I'm a good steward of the budget, too. You don't want to just throw money out there. I'm also at the same token, we've changed our tracking form that veterans come in, so I can see how effective those dollars are working. I'm asking them, where did you hear about us from? Was it from the radio? Was it from the newspaper? Was it from, you know, other areas that I'm putting that money towards? So, hopefully, next year, I'll have a better idea on where that money is working good at, and target those areas, and not use it so much where it's not effective.
Sounds like retail.
Yes, sir.
Do you advertise through the various posts?
That's no other things we need to do, is start getting a lot of the mailings out to the posts.
Absolutely. I mean, I think that's your best bet there. They're always recruiting, trying to get more-
Oh, yeah.
-memberships, so as they're doing that, you could also-
Yeah, we've been actively sending some of our service officers out to, what's that one? The Rotary Club to do talks, to some of the nursing homes where you've got older veterans that can't get to us, so we've been out there, and at times, we've had forty, fifty people that were veterans, sitting in there, listening to our service officer, explain to them benefits, and then the phone calls that come back after that are quite immense, you know, because they didn't know what was out there. They don't have the ability to come to our office, so we're going to them.
And then, the last thing that I see is the increase in pay for the Board members. We haven't had pay increases before, and I know we don't control this, but even our Board of Elections officials haven't got pay increases in multiple years. While it's a small amount, I would, I think we should remove that amount from-
We can't remove, they have to agree to it, Tom.
I believe on that one, we were just talking, having a sidebar over here.
Oh, were you? Okay, I didn't think we could do anything with that.
Pay and commission.
Yeah, go ahead, help us out, Jerry.
You're the ones responsible for establishing the compensation for the Commissioners.
Yeah.
So, that would be within our right range.
Yeah, I think, I think the Board sets those, so.
I mean, I guess they can, they can ask that that amount be included in their budget in case-
In case you decide to pass this resolution of nothing.
Just so it's clear that by approving this, that doesn't-
Give them an increase.
...result in an increase in the compensation.
Okay, so it's just a budget line item currently, because almost all electives have been frozen for five, six years or whatever, so.
I would just say we remove it now. There's no question for it. They have the increase for the employees, that's under their-
What is the breakdown in the difference, Terry, between Board members' compensation increase and employees' compensation increase?
It looks like the salary employees, the difference is $13,779.
Oh, that's all it is then? That is for employees, that's not for the Board members?
That's for the employees, and the Board members, $1,484.
Is that reflected at a 3% then?
Yes, sir.
Just like that. That would have to come before us.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, is the Board members.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's, I mean, they can have it in there, but we would have to approve it, and I don't see any increases coming. We're running on a tight schedule, and you guys are doing a nice job. No problems, Sam, Bob? Okay. So, if we could take the $1,484 out, we'd appreciate that, just because you've got a serious increase going, we've got to make up for next year, the general fund would decrease in dollars, so.
And then, we remove the $35,000 with their agreement-
Correct.
-for the furniture and fixtures.
So, we're now about $110,000 less. Five, 109, 110, five, roughly?
Yeah, I think that's about the rough figure.
Lisa, can you give us a hard number on that, deleting those few things?
New budget request would be $1,697,281.
Is that agreeable?
Hey, I want to hear, $1,697,281.
Is that agreeable to the Veteran Services Commission? Any comments from the Board members at all? Because I don't know if there's anything else for Terry to do. He's gone over to Budget and done a very nice job. Good job, Terry.
And Terry, I just want to say, under your leadership, at least you're wanting to service more veterans, and the money's going towards the veterans. Prior to you being there, it seemed like it was going more towards administration and not for relief allowance. So, even though that you've increased some of the budgetary numbers, I'm glad it's in relief and not in administration, so I just want to give you kudos for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
He's doing a great, I know Don, I've actually seen Don out near the southern part, he was actually trying to do that. I just want to be fair to Don, too. I think he did try to reach out, but I don't want it to seem like he wasn't, because I did see him out in the community, working with the different organizations.
No, I'm just saying, as far as budgetary numbers, we're looking more at relief for veterans than we did before, and that's what's important, is servicing the veterans.
Yes, I agree with that.
Mr. Mackin, introduce yourself for us.
Robert Mackin, President of Lorraine Veterans Commission. What I'm very concerned is, is this year, at the end of this year, the way we're running right now on our relief, it's going to be about $675,000 that our relief is going up. That's not even including these wars that are shutting down hopefully by September, and I'm very concerned with that money, that the $725,000, I don't even know if that's going to be enough, but what I want the Commissioners to know, that we may have to come back and request more money, and it could be a large sum of money to come back in to request. So, I want everybody to understand that we may have to come back in to request more money. The furniture allowance and our, where we're at, that's not a problem, but that relief under there, we're doing more relief than we've ever done in this county before.
That's what we're doing.
And we're doing outstanding, and we're getting down to the southern parts of the county and getting more out, outreach programs are going good, and it wasn't the Rotary Club we talked to, it was Alliance Club, and it was very well receptive. If one of the Commissioners want to come on June 19th to the Senior Center down in Lorraine, we'll have a service officer out there talking to them about that, and so we're getting the relief, we're getting out into the county and going through the county. So, thank you very much for your patience, thank you very much for our budget. Thank you.
I think we'll be in Columbus on that 19th through 22nd.
I'm not doing that trip.
You're not doing that?
Columbus all the time.
Yeah, and, yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. I know you, you know, you have that half inside mill, and if you're able to go through and basically show that you're spending it for the veterans, you know, just come back, show us that you're doing it, that you're doing the outreach, and, you know, we're going to be supportive of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Terry. I'll make a motion to-
Thank you very much.
-approve the Veterans Service Commission's budget for calendar year 2014.
As amended.
As amended, yes.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Miss Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye. Thank you very much. Have a nice day, guys. Madam Clerk, we have a 10 o'clock, now a 10:13 911 warrants office. Our Director of 911, Tracy Slagel, is the Sheriff, or Jack Hammond representing him?
Jack Hammond.
And Sergeant Scarborough. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hi, good morning.
Tracy Slagel, Director, Lorraine County 911. Approximately six months ago, 911 and the Sheriff's Office took steps to further consolidate between the two departments to increase efficiency for the citizens. The dispatch consolidation that we did back in 2012 went very well, still going well. The current phase of consolidation is to move the warrants department, or warrants duties, from the Sheriff's Department to 911. They are currently housed at the Sheriff's Office and will now reside at 911, and will take over those duties. This will give dispatch, as well as the deputies, immediate access to warrants. They'll be housed in the 911 building, they'll have immediate access. Deputies will have access to dispatch information and warrants at the same facility. This is going to be transferred as of June 18th, 2013, and I wasn't alone in the planning of this or the consolidation, so I wanted to thank some people. Number one, the Commissioners, thank you very much for your support. Mr. Cordez, Sheriff's Committee, Chief Deputy Kavanaugh, and Karen Davis, I don't know if she's here today, but she did a great deal of work, and I think without her, this wouldn't have gotten off the ground, so she did a lot of the building facility updates, and she ensured that this would happen. Also, from the Sheriff's Office, Captain Jackie Hammond-
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Aliria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend.
It benefits the citizens, this is the right thing to do.
Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.un.
Much more efficient.
Click on departments, see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
You're worried about speaking, you get such a magnificent job. I tell you, you know-
It's my first time up here, well, maybe not.
The, I'm real proud of the work that's going on at 911. We're going to save a considerable amount of money. Before, we had a staffing organization that really wasn't, you know, accessible at 24/7. We were at 24/7 at 911. Jack and Russ started working on this a while back. We were able to renovate some old space that was being used as a junk space, everybody was throwing there, some old stuff in it, and we also now have a drive-up window, right?
I was going to ask, is that already up and running?
We do have a drive-up window that has been installed.
There was a little resistance, but Jack and I prevailed on this, and we figured the ROI on the window, the driver gets the warrants, will pay for itself in about three months with-
It actually, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You can interrupt, you're the director.
I interrupted, yeah. It actually saves time for the deputies. They don't have to get out of their vehicle. It's much more efficient, then it gives them time on the road, it saves them time if they have an inmate in the back of the car, they can just pull it in.
So, they'll radio in, the warrant will be put in the drawer, drawer goes out, they take the warrant, they go. The applied time that we're saving is significant.
Absolutely.
So, it's going to be, it's going to be a really great undertaking, and I'll be talking to you about people that are coming over. We're bringing people, like we did from Dispatch, over to 911, and we'll be hiring them there, and obviously, we're collaborating on the management of the organization with the Sheriff's folks. It's going really, really great. And then, the next piece will be that software piece, which we'll be talking about in July.
Thank you very much.
I'm real proud of this team.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cordez, let's go back to the item on the agenda, item number 13, lucky 13, recommended changes to the Cleveland route. You briefed each of us, I'm assuming, and we all had questions, so is Robin here currently?
Pam.
Pam, I'm sorry, not Robin. Tracy just left, I'm thinking Robin.
Morning.
Good morning, Pam.
Pam Novak with Lorraine County Transit. We're here to discuss some changes that we're looking at for the Cleveland service. We have a couple options. We are currently running right downtown Cleveland. We've had some issues with road closures and things like that, but we're trying to look at being a little bit more efficient, getting riders the ability to go into different areas of Cleveland without us having to go everywhere else. The options that we've looked at, one was the Westlake Park and Ride Lot. With that service, we can get commuters into Cleveland, we just can't get people coming from Cleveland. So, it's what we call a reverse route trips, we will not be able to do, so we would probably end up losing some ridership based on that.
What do you mean? We can get them to the west side, but when they come back, we have no way of picking them up?
Well, we can pick them up, Commissioner. What it is, is we have a few folks that are coming from Cleveland that hook into and go to Lorraine Community College right now.
Correct.
Our concern here was our residents and getting them where they needed to go. It was a bonus if we could pick up some-
Bring some of theirs back.
Right, so what happens here is they end up more down by where the train, the train station is, the, what do they call it, the tram, the train.
Well, we're proposing to go to the park and ride, which breaks that loop for them, right, on the other side of the border?
The, uh, the Rapid Train Station, uh, was, which, what they call the center is the Triscuit Rapid Station. Uh, this gives the riders the ability, the, the train runs like every, about every fifteen minutes. So it gives all the riders the ability to, to get to Cleveland. Uh, once they get to the train there, they can go to the Cleveland Hopkins Airport. They can go right downtown. They have options of getting onto the trolleys and, you know, other RTA services. Uh, the second part of that, though, uh, the riders are currently paying four-twenty-five each way. So what we're actually now proposing is we charge our regular rate of three-thirty-five. And we are also partnering with the Cleveland RTA to accept transfers.
I've spoken with, with, uh, Joe Calabrese, uh, at RTA. He, uh, made it real simple. He goes, we'll take yours on the way in, you take ours on the way out. Uh, which is nice. We had a reciprocal arrangement with them some years ago when we were doing transfer points in, um, Avon Lake. So he was, he was real happy to go back to that. So it makes a lot of sense for us, uh, to, uh, to honor theirs and they'll honor ours. Now, they're not going to honor ours after you get off the bus in Public Square.
Correct.
You're not going to get on another line and, you know, go someplace else, but they'll honor it to Public Square and we'll honor it to, back to our drop-off points from the Cleveland route.
Correct.
I think that if you buy a ticket in Cleveland, you can transfer around a bunch of their routes within a couple hours, right?
Yes, yeah, you have the ability to, once you get off the train, then you could purchase their daily pass or whatever their fare is. Uh, and you can get it on either another train or get on other buses. They have trolleys that is actually free.
But that won't be available with our transfer. Our transfer strictly take you downtown Cleveland.
Okay.
Okay, now with regard to.
Now, if they go to Triscuit though, and they want to go to the airport, or they do have to buy another ticket then?
Nope. They, once they get off our bus, they will have a transfer ticket. They'll get right onto the train, ride the train to the airport, and get off.
They get one shot though.
Right.
Correct.
One shot on that octopus of runs they can do.
That's if we go to Triscuit, Commissioner. I, I'm not so sure we're going to Triscuit, okay?
I think we decide that though, after all the evidence is presented.
Well, I didn't mean it quite that way, but you understand that the, the Triscuit, it's, it's not going to be our recommendation that we go to Triscuit.
Okay.
The Triscuit presents some challenges with, with timing and, and the routes. And as I spoke to all three of you previously on this, um, the park and ride, it looks a little better for us with regard to timing. That park and ride is located between, uh, Clug and, uh, Columbia, uh, back behind Outback Steakhouse.
Right.
It's a pretty big park and ride. Uh, the timing for us to run the routes improves significantly. If we go to Triscuit, which will offer, I do realize offers additional opportunities, now we're back in the same problem we're encountering going downtown.
Timing.
Timing.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, uh, I, I'm real excited about the, the potential at Triscuit because that gives the airport link that we've been missing. But right now, unless you're going to step up the buses, the lead time seems to get excessive. Pam, we, we've talked about this. The turnaround just isn't there to grab the ridership at the park and ride. Is it from our park and rides?
From either the Westlake Park and Ride or the Rapid Station, we can actually get, um, the riders to their destination. If it's right at Tower City, with what we're currently doing now, we would be able to get them there around the same times.
Oh, yeah, but I want to do better on the time. See, the problem we're having at, with our ridership is the frequency where the bus is leaving to get them to either Cleveland or a connector. And, uh, my, generally, my feeling is if we have a bus that leaves about every thirty minutes, and people can rely upon, I think that they'll be more willing to utilize that, that service. If we go to Triscuit, isn't it about forty-five minutes or fifty minutes round?
Those are the numbers, I think.
Yeah, if we go to, if we go to the park and ride in Westlake, it's about thirty-five minutes, right?
Correct.
What is our ridership for the current route?
The, uh, Cleveland service just for the month of May was up at eight hundred. Uh, now that's trips, it's not, we don't count people.
Okay, define trips for everyone to know.
Trips is every time a person gets on the bus, they get counted. If I get on the bus twice during the day, I'm counted as two individual people.
So if I go from, I get on in, uh, the Board of Elections, and then get off at Cleveland, get on at Cleveland, go back to the Board of Elections, that's two?
That's two trips.
Okay, so, uh, roughly four hundred people for a month of May. And how much have we spent on this program?
Uh, as of September through May, the total cost of service was a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh, locally, there would be fifty-three thousand.
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
Fifty-three.
And how much do we spend on our current transit for the in-county route?
Uh, we are spending, it's approximately, um, that's including the, the Cleveland service, approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand a month.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Not all general fund.
Yeah, but, I know. That's what I'm asking though, the fifty-three thousand.
It's with the Cleveland route.
The fifty-three thousand is the Cleveland route, is what we spent from September to May.
Right.
And that came out of the general fund. What is the general fund amount, uh, for the entire year or the same month, or same period for in-county?
I don't have that with me, but I can.
I, I believe it's budgeted for fifty thousand, am I right, for the entire year?
Well, that's from general fund.
Right, that's what I'm saying, general fund, that's just in-county routes.
Right, we, you know, that's the Commissioner's support of the in-county routes. We have state support. We have, um, uh, this, we get some money for discounted fees for age and, and.
Disability?
Disabilities, uh, and then we have Fairbox, et cetera, but, uh, yeah, we, normally, we wouldn't have split it off this way. We would have just used it as globalization, but we wanted to watch how the service was doing. So we kept the accounting separate on that.
There's different rules.
Did you bring, did you bring this sheet for the Commissioners with all this information on it?
Yes.
Can we give it to them?
Sure.
Let me make it a little easier.
Now you got to give one to Teresa too, right?
Now, I have.
You have one?
I have a map here of the, uh, the RTA Rapid Transit and Connecting Bus Routes. I, so I'm just going to pass this down if you want to take a look at it. Commissioners, I, I also want to, uh, while you're looking at this issue with the Cleveland route, I want to tell you how generous Lorraine County was to our other counties in, uh, Ohio. Allen County RTA is buying a thirty-foot bus at three hundred and six thousand dollars. The Eastern Ohio RTA is getting seventy-two thousand dollars in operating assistance. Lawrence County is getting a hundred and forty thousand dollars in operating assistance. Licking County is getting eighty thousand operating assistance, a bus washing unit, and shop equipment for two hundred and eighty-three thousand. Sandusky is getting fourteen thousand operations, nineteen thousand in planning, and three hundred and fifteen thousand in capital cost contracting. And Steel Valley RTA is getting thirty-two thousand of added maintenance for a total cost of one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, all courtesy of Lorraine County who had to return their funds. Just want you to know how generous we've been to those counties that support their transit. I went and got that information after we had to turn that money back where, where it went. Those are communities that match that money so that they can provide transportation to those that don't have any other options in their community.
It's unfortunate.
And our generosity will happen again next year if we don't do something.
Right, well, we asked for a two-dollar increase, maybe we'll ask for a four-dollar increase next time.
A year.
A year, a year.
I thought that would be a little.
Well, I mean, we looked at, I was surprised when we actually looked at the results, only one community actually supported it.
I understand, Commissioner.
And it, I, I mean, that's where we get our, um, information on how we should go. My concern with this is, you know, we started off with this, uh, the Cleveland route, supposed to be six months temporarily, uh, temporary route, see how it went. Um, it's been pretty much a flop, in my opinion. Um, and I think what we should do, I mean, we're spending more money on the one route than what we're spending for the in-county route. And it's going to be nice to be able to get people out, uh, from, you know, the Board of Elections over to the, um, parking whatever for RTA. But it would be nicer if we could actually get them around the community. And, uh, my thoughts would be to actually eliminate the Cleveland route altogether and focus whatever amount of money that we want to give to the, out of the general fund to in-county routes.
What would be, if we use the same fifty-three thousand dollars for a Cleveland run, which would extrapolate to probably about seventy-five thousand for a year-long deal? What would that do to our local transit? Pam, that's probably the question that we want to ask, the comparisons of running that versus increasing to seventy-five thousand dollars locally. Significantly impact our ability to match and drag in additional funds, provide for the in-county residents? Is it a significant, those are probably number one. Look, it's been so long since we've operated actual, real transit. I'm sure it'll take you some time, but if you want to go back and look at, and bring us something next week, maybe, I'm not, how long would it take you to figure out what we would do with the same amount of dollars and the matched dollars? You're the finance person.
We can definitely have it, have some information by next week.
And then bring it back to us next week, and we'll do this again, once again, on the agenda to see what would happen or not happen.
Sure.
I don't know where the board's leaning in regards to the Cleveland route, Commissioner Kowski, we know Commissioner Williams' stance.
Yeah, I, I'm open to hear both sides of the issue. Um, I, I see where, what you're saying. We'd rather try to help support in-county travel rather than going out of the county, but there's not always the jobs here that the people in Lorraine County have to, are forced to go outside the county to work. And may have some barriers to, um, getting there and, you know. So I, I'd like to see both sides. So if we can get that information for us next week, that would be greatly appreciated.
Approximately four hundred people, five days a week, so twenty-two days a month, whatever we're running.
Okay.
Um, you're talking twenty people a day probably, on average.
Well, Commissioner, the, the problem with building commuter services, you got to, they got to believe it's consistently there, and it's got to be better than waiting two hours in between buses.
And giving up what they've currently got now, even whatever they might have may not be as convenient as what we're offering if they drop what they've got.
If you go, if you go to, if you go to the park and ride at Westlake, you go to the park and ride, especially the one right outside North Ridgeville and, and North Olmsted, a lot of, a lot of Lorraine County cars there.
Correct.
There are, and, you know, the, the thing with it, there's cars there. They're able to drive over, get it, and they can do multiple transfers. They don't just get the one shot, is the way I'm looking at it. If you do it in-county, I've been out at the, um, college, talking with individuals out there, out at JVS. These are people that are trying to improve their lives, and to try to get a schedule for a college class at Community College, when the transit goes every two hours or so out there, is very difficult.
Well, the colleges are part, but still, we're talking about the workforce. These are the, basically, the working port. We have no other transportation within the county to move around to their jobs. I mean, we've had discussions with companies who'd love us to have runs to certain areas, uh, to move their workforce there, because they don't pay enough for their workforce to have transportation necessary.
Correct.
I think I indicated to you, and I don't know if I've done it publicly, that a very large employer.
Correct.
In the southern part of this county, uh, that had jobs that they were actually importing workers for, um, and they wanted workers out of Lorraine. And we ran into significant barriers with transportation to get those workers from Lorraine to this company for employment opportunities. And no matter how much we worked the numbers, we weren't able to get a service, even putting on an additional bus line that made any sense at all to get those workers out there. And so we weren't able to provide those jobs. We worked through WDA, we worked through Community Development, we worked through FTA, just couldn't put it together.
That was in the county.
Correct.
Yeah. No, I understand both points of view. When we started this route to Cleveland, it had a benefit, we thought, a built-in revenue that would help with the workforce and tourism. And it hasn't panned out quite that way because, but again, we don't run convenient times, I mean.
Right.
You're stuck there ten hours, however you look at it, to make it work.
And that was the issue, talking to people, that was the issue that, that they seemed to have. Now, I can't tell you it's the only issue, I don't know. Uh, but the, the one overriding theme that kept coming out was if I don't go get the six in the morning bus, even though I don't have to work until eight-thirty. I can't, I can't get into Cleveland. So I have to go into Cleveland, I'm there at seven-fifteen, and then I, you know, I have to sit around for an hour and fifteen minutes before I even start work.
It's a long day.
Uh, yes, and it made for such a long day that they weren't willing to commit to the service. Uh, and, and so that's what's led us to talk, re- re- revisit those talks with RTA about the potential of doing the transfer. So that the service was much more rapid, plus now the cost is coming down.
Right.
Quite a bit, uh, to make that even a better look at what it would be. I don't have a dog in this hunt with the Cleveland route or the in-service route. Uh, I'm just going to give you the statistics and, but I will tell you that sooner or later, we're going to have to do something to mitigate. Uh, and have some kind of mass transit alternative that goes into Cleveland. Uh, and if, Commissioner, if your concern is the transfer ticket to go other places, I'll have that talk with RTA. I, quite frankly, I didn't, I didn't really push the issue any further than getting them down Cleveland. They may be quite willing to take that transfer, and like they do with theirs, within, I think it's a two or three-hour window, that transfer may be good to go other places. Didn't really ask the question. I was just very happy that we were getting, uh, the Director himself, for, from RTA, in- involving and investing in wanting to collaborate.
I mean, Joe's always wanted to, we've had multiple discussions over here. He says on NOAC, I mean, that's what it's all about. Lake Train has a great program coming in Medina County. Gee, Medina, they're doing so much service, they're getting classified from rural up to urban. Now they're going to lose money for performing more service.
We're the only county that's not doing it.
Right.
We're the only contiguous county.
Right.
To Cuyahoga that's not having something going into Cuyahoga and vice versa.
Correct. Okay, thank you, Pam. Do you have a comment in regards to transit?
Very brief one, David Ashenhurst Oberlin. Uh, the final results do show that Lorraine also passed, uh, the transit levy by sixteen votes, and it failed in Alariah by thirty-eight. So I, I really hope that we continue to look at the dynamics of the election in which these measures are put on the ballot and say it's, I mean, obviously, there's a lot more that needs to be done. But look at turnout, look at what else was on the ballot, look how it went. It's not the same as some of the other transit votes that have been around here. And obviously, I speak from a place that really does get it. Um, so they're not passing it like Oberlin continues to pass it. But I'd be remiss if I didn't scream on behalf of Oberlin, you got to do something about this, and also just point out that there are two jurisdictions that passed it. And Oberlin wasn't the only one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, sales tax, when we did it a few years back, it was Oberlin and City of Lorraine who approved it.
Yes, but, you know.
We had a little bit bigger margin.
Yeah.
But, but here's, let's talk to, uh, real briefly to an issue that Commissioner Williams brought up, and it does, it does have a certain amount of merit for, for being discussed. That is targeting a, a tax for transit in a specified geographical region. I've done some exploratory review of that, and there is some potential. Problem is, if you take a service like going to Cleveland, if, let's say, we did get a levy passed in Lorraine, Alariah, Oberlin, a couple other jurisdictions close in, and we've just provided services in those areas. Am I supposed to stand at the park and ride like the bus police and ask to see their license where they came from? You know, it, it, so that would be very challenging on, on this type of service, because it would be generally open to everybody, but you may have just a few targeted communities.
Paying for it.
Paying for it.
Yeah, but with that, uh, you do get the, you get the actual routes in their areas. So, yeah, if somebody's in, coming in to visit in Alariah, could they get on the route? Yeah, they could. They're going to be paying a service fee for it. But it would also increase the number of routes going there. And the reason for I brought that up.
Oh, and I know I disagree.
Talking about the, uh, the districts is, I hear all the time from individuals in Lorraine, can't get out to Mercy Hospital, can't get out to Walmart.
All the time. All the time.
And that, and just, do we need a, a transit going out to Rochester? No. Do we need it going out to, you know, North Ridgeville right now? Maybe for the college, but probably not too much, they're gonna grab four-eighty, go over to the RTA.
Ridgeville used to be a pretty heavily, heavy route, Tom, the people moving around are within the county.
Well, for, for the need, I'm, I'm looking at just pretty kinda like the need, I think, you know, if we look at the, the northern parts, and I even talked to people about this in the, when it was on the ballot, you really needed Lorain, Elyria, and Oberlin, as friends give me that, instead of a handout, but a handup, and that's why I think we may wanna take a look at redoing those districts as well.
Well, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking, we're gonna be digesting the data more fully, we didn't have this data before.
No, we just had the initial results, because.
Right.
You know, it really surprised me when the numbers came in, and Lorain, actually, it showed at the time.
Before, before we put this levy initiative on the ballot, we had nothing to go by. We needed these numbers to be able to look at what the reflections from each community were.
Correct.
And we're gonna use that, as David suggested, to our advantage, to try to solve some, some issues with why we weren't as supportive as more fully as we need to be. And, and I wasn't actually saying we shouldn't do what you said, I'm just pointing out that there's some, there's some inherited problems that could occur with that.
Sort of like RTA not wanting to drive to Avon Lake, because it's being paid for by Cleveland, Cuyahoga County tax dollars, it's the same argument.
Exactly. The, the, so, with, quite frankly, I'm gonna be bringing you a ballot initiative again, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be changed to reflect what, what's happened off the last data sets that we, that we received, it's not gonna be the same.
The only discussions I've had with people are willing to actually work on it, they think that we should actually have a comprehensive plan on where the routes would be, where they would service based on the amount of dollars we were gonna generate, or at least a general idea of what it's going to provide, based on if it's two bucks a household, four bucks a household.
You know the problem with the last time, we were trying to capture a large audience, and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars just wasn't gonna provide a lot.
Right, that, that was the issue, so I mean, maybe if we actually have that input, and I keep saying it's gotta be citizen-driven if it's going to pass, the Board of Commissioners are not gonna be able to pass a transit levy based on what we say up here on a Wednesday meeting.
Ted, you know what, you know what happened? We did have people come in, we had both colleges come in.
Correct.
With student involvement, we had a couple advocate groups, but they all had different agendas.
Correct.
And, you know, the pie was getting, looked, be sliced up so much, that, you know, the, the piece you would get was pretty transparent.
Well, that's what I mean, if we designed a plan based on dollars that could be done, and that would be acceptable, then that's something, something like foul, because we still are fiduciary, and we manage it, that this amount of dollars creates this amount of routes.
We'll, we'll have that, in July, because I think we have to start that process.
It'll be on the ballot by August.
Right.
It's unfortunate, we just did Job and Family Services today, what, seven-hundred-thousand dollars for transportation that used to come to us by buying tickets, but they can't buy tickets up front where we could match those dollars.
They used to buy tickets, MRDD used to buy tickets, lots of organizations did. Unfortunately, I went to those.
That doesn't kinda match.
Right, I went to those organizations some years ago, it's farmland, Commissioner, okay? It's farming, remember from last week?
Mm-hmm.
And I tried to explain to them that they bulked a lot of us funds, that we would give significantly discounted rides to their consumer base, but they didn't wanna front-load the money as a contribution. They wanted to buy the least amount of tickets they needed to buy, rather than saying, well, here's fifty thousand, and give us a seventy-five percent discount on the tickets when our consumer base rides, and we were gonna give them special passes for their, their folks. Nobody wanted to do that. Maybe, maybe today, they may, but most of these organizations are fairly well-funded, so they're providing for their own transportation needs, although they realize that there's probably a better way of doing it. We met with all those, and then we had, ESC had a lot of groups together going over those issues, and it just fizzles when you start talking about money, nobody wants to put the money on the table.
Well, that's even no offense, Terry, you're new here, but Bob, we've had those discussions with Veteran Service Commission on how we can reallocate those dollars, what are you gonna spend in transportation, twenty-fourteen budget? I gotta hear, but I gotta look it up. But, I mean, those are the type of issues we've discussed in the past, trying to.
Well, you know.
Two-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars in contract services.
Yeah.
I, I am washing the bus for Terry, so I'm hoping that leads to greater collaboration.
Yeah.
They do bring their buses, you're all set over there, right, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I mean, yeah, those are the issues we need to wrap around, and all the individual, like Goodwill, we've helped with the bus.
Actually, I'm going to, I talked to the Chair of our Board, and I'm going to talk to the CEO, which spearheaded from you, your talk with Chris that one day, about, 'cause Goodwill doesn't know how much it's going to cost them each year, if they gave us the money, we wrapped the bus with Goodwill, Goodwheels or whatever, they're.
Wrap it, I'll paint it, decorate it.
Right, yeah, it'll look like a Goodwill bus.
Carry bags of groceries in the back.
Put the board member's picture on it.
Yeah, the, yeah, right, Goodwheels would be, you know, they would get the credit for it, but then we could match those dollars.
We, we could, and, and I met with an organization called Communities That Care, that's apparently trying to work with Goodwill on transportation issues. Comes right down to it, everybody comes in, they have a great desire to produce something for their consumer base that they see the need for, but they don't have dollars.
Right.
And, and that's becoming an issue, and then, if they do have a few dollars, they're so restrictive on what they want us to do that we're not able to do it.
Correct, 'cause we can't do point-to-point, we're not charter service.
We, we can kinda get close, but we have to, we have to at least have a, if not completely thin, a veneer.
Uh-huh.
Of, of, of not breaking those regulations, they can be bent a little bit, and that was the challenges we had getting onto that, to that employer with the, with the folks from Lorain, the only way it worked is if we shuttled, and didn't make any stops, and really run any kind of route, and it just wasn't permissible to do that.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
See you next week, here.
Okay.
Would you put that on the agenda for us, Teresa?
Yep.
Uh-huh. Board correspondence?
No.
No, where we at now?
We're at Mr. Cordes.
Oh, Mr. Cordes, though, okay, jeez.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I need a, I need an advance over to the watershed program, it's one of those grants where we need funding, and then we'll get it back.
I did that part of the transfers already.
I, I was in my folder, is this a different transfer, Lisa?
Yeah, this is, this is something added on to our board business that you.
But there was no other advances other than that, that's why I said advances.
Oh, David gave you copies of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've already passed.
Oh, so that's all, okay, that's fine, because paperwork.
We didn't have any advances.
I know, and then that came in.
Gotta watch you.
I'm like, well, maybe, she knows better than I do. I wasn't gonna question you.
I made it easier.
Yeah.
In case he kinda forgot, 'cause I wasn't sure if he was bringing them up, so. Still on top of things.
Ink on that one.
I know.
Mark. And your report, Mr. Cordes?
No, I was waiting for you to sign, the, the, as an update, beginning in the next two weeks, our summer youth hire program is ramping, the Board gave me the authority to do all that hiring, so we didn't have to hire two-hundred people on our sheet, we, we now have two-hundred, that we're gonna put to work this summer, we've hired the, a few people to be summer supervisors, et cetera, the program should be, I would say, sometime next week, starting to get them out to work sites, still looking for a few work sites, if you know folks that want to work with us on improving our community, and also mentoring these young folks, and getting a little free labor at the same time. Please, um, contact us.
I have a couple I heard of you, I put that up on my Facebook, and I had two companies that I've gotta send over, you and Mike Longo, that are interested in.
Please, please do, remember, it's a partnership, you get a little free labor, but you're supposed to invest in these, these young people, and mentor them on how to come to work, stay at work, come back from lunch on time.
Soft skills.
Pretty much, employment, you know, we do the soft skills in the classroom, we need to do some hard skills in, out in the actual work environment, so, it's not just put forty of them on, you know, in front of the sled and start cracking the whip, running them down the trail, we have to invest in them on multiple levels, so that they, they realize what it means to have a job, get paid for that job, but also the commitment that's necessary to keep that job. I'm pretty excited, Job Family Services provided considerable amount of money, again, this summer for us to put that program out there, and we're looking forward to a successful summer.
When you say youth, it's up to twenty, what?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
So, they have to be, we are eligible, or the, the standard has come down a bit, what we're looking at is if anybody that qualified for the meal program in the schools seems to fit the new definition, we still screen them, but that's a good breakpoint for, if people are talking to you about a niece, a nephew, a child that may be eligible to be in the program, that'll give you a kind of a reference point. Again, they have to be facing some, some challenges and barriers, and they have to be in a certain economic, social economic grouping before they're eligible, but we'll screen anybody and try to make it work for them.
And jobs are open, as far as what they can do?
What'd you have in mind?
Well.
Lucas Courtland. It's my new company, I just started it.
I talked to you, but I have an intern that's gonna be coming in, that's gonna be working for.
Right, Ray took care of that.
And also, helping Sandy out, but I didn't know if we could actually get some help at the county with it.
Oh, we're, we're bringing ten into the county, and a couple into the office, we, we've been very successful with, in a couple in the office, in fact, I think, didn't I tell you the one, one gal that was with us, she started out a little rugged, Sandy worked with her, really, really turned into a, a, a real gem for us, and I had thought she was a little older, so we had that front position open, I said, you know, I told Sandy, I said, well, I'm gonna talk to the Commissioner, I think we should offer this position to her, she's really worked out well over the last few months under your guidance, and Sandy goes, oh, well, she's got another year of high school going. So, you know, we didn't offer, obviously, because part of what we do is try to graduate them and move them into secondary, post-secondary education and so forth, but that's how well sometimes the, the, it can work out for them.
You know, the other company I was out, actually, out there yesterday, looking at their small operation, Buckeye Wheel Polishing, I didn't know this, but the truckers actually get their wheels polished, cleaned and polished, in order to avoid stops, I guess if it's a clean truck, they can go through, that's a perception, I guess, in the trucking industry, it's sixty-five dollars a rim, is what they get charged on that.
Forget the landscaping, or the wheel polish.
It's a dirty job, but that's why, you know, he was talking about, he's trying to get people to come out, and he actually hires younger guys, try to get them the work ethic.
If, if he needs, a couple things, first of all, he needs permanent workers, have them contact us, so that we can start referring people from WDA.
Okay.
And, and that's how we did the invasive species eradication program, we, we have some really hard-to-serve employees right now, and it's gonna task us very heavily to keep them engaged, we have a few people that, that have prior records, that they're trying to get, you know, gainful employment, get some resume time with us, so that they, they're employable someplace else. We can, we can, we can work with them on getting people there that, that really, really will work hard to keep a job, because they're facing barriers, and they have not been able to locate employment. Please have them contact us, we're still looking for locations.
Okay, I've been hit by a lot of retail, also, small business owners looking for experience.
I will tell you that, that the challenges with retail sometimes addresses an issue, you have some, some, some younger folks, a little, little rough around the edges, so if they're willing to work with them a little more, work on their skillsets with them a little more, they may be able to get that, you know.
Diamond in the rough.
Diamond in the rough, so, but if, if, they're not gonna have somebody, you know, slide right in, looking like GQ, and being able to, you know, do retail on point of service, they're gonna have to, they're gonna have to work, work with them.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Ennis?
Mr. Ennis?
No, Mr. Ennis.
Oh, basically, Mr. Ennis.
I have one matter of imminent litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session.
Commissioners report. Oh, yesterday, Commissioner Kalo and I attended our Transportation Improvement District meeting, it's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars available, it used to be that we just got that money, now we actually have to compete for that money, has to have some economic benefit to the community, so the three projects that we put forward was Cooper Foster in City of Lorain and City of Amherst, the project consists of three-lane widening from State Route fifty-eight to Oberlin Avenue, the roadway will be reconstructed with concrete pavement, drainage improvements, concrete walks, and traffic signal improvements. The second project was LaGrange Road resurfacing, which consists of three lanes widening from Forest Street to north, to the north, and limits of the Village of LaGrange to replace existing two-lane asphalt road, and the third one that we put on was a project that's already under construction, so it may have some difficulty getting the awarded the, the amount of money, but it's the Sheffield Village Abbey Road Project, which consists of widening Abbey Road from the entrance to Lorain County Community College to State Route two-fifty-four, with resurfacing of asphalt and signal improvement, so hopefully, we'll get at least one of those funded through the Transportation Improvement District, and then after that, all three of us were at our one-hundred-and-fiftieth demolition in Lorain, it was on West Seventeenth Street, it was very well-attended, Mike DeWine was there, and said we were doing a great job ahead of everybody else, seemingly so in the state, I took my grandson Gavin, he's four years old, and he just thought it was the best thing, watching them tear the house down, so. And this morning, Commissioner Kalo and I also attended our Team Lorain County Board meeting at seven-thirty this morning, looking, still looking for a new replacement for CEO that had left us last month, and hopefully, we will have a new, new one shortly.
Thank you for delivering my report, Commissioner. Commissioner Williams?
You're welcome. Well, you do the same thing.
Well, unfortunately, yesterday, I was reliving my glory days, and I challenged some youth to a race, which I won, but the next day, I paid with, with a bad back, so.
Probably ruined those kids' self-esteem, too.
Yeah, ruined them for life.
No, 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 they're, they're ready, they wanna challenge me again, so.
So, what about this baseball, are you gonna be able to handle baseball?
Oh, yeah, I'll be able to play baseball.
Okay.
And I'm ready.
I'm ready.
DH, could be the Republicans' DH, won't have to run.
Designator.
Yeah, I can run. Yeah, we're looking forward to that, we actually had to talk on it the twenty-seventh.
Do you have a date set for that?
Yeah, July twenty-seventh.
July twenty-seventh?
Two PM at the Pipe Yard.
What day of the week is the twenty-seventh?
It's a Saturday.
What time?
Two PM.
Two PM.
And the charity is gonna be Second Harvest Food Bank, we're still working on our rosters, we were joking yesterday at the land bank, we're in Dennis Flores' ward, and the joke was, well, who gets to get Dennis, the Republicans or the Democrats? I heard Dennis is actually a pretty good ball player, so Chase actually claimed him this time.
That's a good one.
But, yeah, Dennis, you know, we have a good relationship, and I was happy to see him getting three houses torn down on Seventeenth Street, his ward, but that's gonna go on, still waiting to get the rosters, and that, getting some sponsorships from companies, actually, Quark's is gonna be one of the sponsors.
Is it elected officials only play, or could, like, their family members play?
No, we're, we're trying, we don't want, we know how the Democrats work, we don't want you lining up all the young guys.
Darn it.
Now, the only way it will work is like a state official, if they're not able to make it, or a congressman, Congressman Jordan may have somebody from his staff playing, as his parents will be celebrating their fiftieth wedding anniversary. Still waiting to hear back from possibly Josh Mandell, so, toe chase that, he's gonna try to get Senator Brown on there, so kind of a rematch in November. Good things come on that, we'll have a release on all the information in two to three weeks, when the rosters come out. Spent Friday evening at Quark's, actually, for wine tasting, for Amherst Educational fundraiser, great evening out there, wanna thank everyone that put that on, and I'm[1731.23]
And I'm sure there's some other things that I'm forgetting to mention, but, oh, had a talk with a gun manufacturer, we made it first, through their first round of cuts, working with Jobs Ohio, they're impressed with what we've sent them, they seem excited about Ohio. First thirty-one states applied and we made it through the first round of cuts, and I've been talking with the individual, you know, weekly, letting them know what's going on here in Lorain County, City of Avon being the, what, third-best city to live in in northern Ohio, just kinda promoting Lorain County and.
North Ridgeville the safest?
Right. Talked to Marson Catter's office, they're gonna look at sending a letter of support, so is Congressman Bob Gibbs and Congressman Jim Jordan, so. And then we have some state officials, I've talked to Mike DeWine yesterday about it, and his office is gonna look at possibly sending a letter of support too. So, trying to really focus in with Jobs Ohio and what we could have to offer, two to three hundred jobs, and it's not just manufacturing, it's gonna be their corporate headquarters, so.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah, and then we have another small company that we had come in, gonna be setting up a meet and greet with some potential customers, then try to get them to relocate here. Not as exciting, but still a good, small company with up to twelve jobs. All right, end of my report.
For correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Come on up.
Turn up Sam.
You know the routine, just, we know you, but you gotta tell us your name and address for the record.
John Smith.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
Good morning, everyone. Samuel Felton Jr., Commander, DAV Chapter Twenty, Chairman of the Valor Home. Reason I'm here this morning, I have some serious concerns concerning our Lorain County Veteran Service Commission. First of all, let me say this, I understand that you're giving them kudos about the progress they've made. Well, the reason they've made this progress, if the truth be told, is you have a concerned group of veterans who have made serious suggestions about the way things have been done to Veteran Service Commission. I mean, because last year they had a paltry amount of money concerning outreach. We suggested to them and gave them unique ideas how to increase that amount of money for, to further the veterans' outreach, so before they get kudos, they ought to be reminded there was a group of veterans that suggested this to them. However, that's not the reason I'm here. The reason I'm here is because these, this progress and implementation that have been made is because of the dialogue that has been in existence with the Veteran Service Commission and the veterans. However, that dialogue doesn't exist anymore. Yesterday, we tried to have a dialogue with Commissioner Mackin, and he just jumped up and said, "There's not enough here for a quorum," or whatever, and he just walked out of the room. Okay, we understand that, but it was still, it still could've been an informal discussion, which he chose not to participate in whatsoever. And ever since the, our removal of Mr. Childers, that dialogue has been totally nonexistent. So, we asked a few questions about the sunshine law and how is it that Mr. Childers can still be present and be part of a decision-making process and the budget for Lorain County veterans when he no longer serves in that capacity? So, we were told that, well, you know, you don't have private meetings and stuff like this. Okay, I mean, all this smacks of impropriety, because there has to be some accountability somewhere, there isn't any.
Jerry? Now, they're, they're bound by sunshine law, just like we are, correct?
I had Jerry speak with Sam this morning, because I couldn't address the issue, I.
Yeah, yes, yesterday there was going to be a meeting of the Veterans Service Commission due to the fact that a couple of the members were absent due to illness, there was not a quorum, and they were unable to meet. My understanding, they were in the process of completing the budget things, which had to be presented today. Even though Mr. Childers is no longer on the board, he's been part of that board for the entire year, and you were one step away from completing it. Mr. Mackin wanted to consult with Mr. Childers so that there would be an understanding of these numbers, complete the final compilation of this, and, you know, Mr. Mackin decided he needed Mr. Childers' assistance in completing that budget. That's, that's a permissible thing to do, any, any, I mean, any two people can meet together to talk about something, so.
Rhetorically, rhetorically Jerry, that sounds great, morally doesn't sound too good to me. And the reason I say that is because when Don Bates was removed from his position, he had to relinquish any information, any materials, and wasn't allowed back in the building. Yesterday, while we were there, and you were part of that so-called meeting that they said they didn't have, which is now contained within a minutes, about how Bob Childers, Bob Mackin, our director, Mr. Stone, and another individual, and you were in there talking about litigation concerning Mr. Childers. Now, my concern is this, is this you acting as a private citizen, a county employee, an officer of the court, because is that legal for you to represent him?
I met with Mr. Mackin and Mr. Childers on Friday, at which time Mr. Childers was still a member of the board. They had some legal questions, which I indicated to them that I needed to research in order to give them a complete answer on that, and I had indicated it was my intention to come to the meeting on Tuesday and meet with the board. Again, we could not meet. I felt it was legitimate and appropriate to provide Mr. Childers with an answer, with an answer to a question that he addressed to me at the point when he was still my client. And so, he asked me the question when it was appropriate and he was my client, so I completed the answer to those questions. At the end of it, I advised Mr. Childers that I could no longer represent him, I could no longer give him legal advice, and that he needed to obtain his, his own legal counsel with respect to anything he wanted to do. I then proceeded to discuss with Mr. Mackin issues that he had. That's how it was handled, I.
Okay, now, one other issue I have. Mr. Mackin jumped up and said, "I'm not gonna argue, meeting adjourned." Somewhere along in the interpretation of the Veteran Service Commission working for us veterans, well, either that's been thrown out the window or it's been lost along the way, because none of us came in there with a rowdy attitude, we came in there to ask pertinent questions. Mr. Stone remained, McKinley Dickerson remained. We had a good adult dialogue with some good points and questions brought up. Mr. Mackin chose not to even indulge. Now, simply because there was not enough members for a quorum, he could not at least indulge, if that's, that's the word I could best use right now, 'cause I'm kind of upset. But, I mean, he couldn't at least afford the veterans that he's supposed to work for the time to at least hear what we had to say, while he's citing rules and regulations and they're instead of violating the sunshine law. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Sam.
I was just wondering, we, we talked about this before, I brought it up, I think before Mr. Stone came on board, but would the board like to offer Veterans Commissions the ability to use this room so they could utilize the system to record their meetings? I'll bring that up to you, Jerry, if that's something you would wanna do, if this board would allow.
We do have a recorder that we purchased, and then she transcribes, my administrative assistant transcribes off the recorder.
You have to come, you have to come up to the microphone, 'cause otherwise it won't be heard, sorry. If you could just repeat what you just said, so.
Yeah, we, we have in our office a recorder that we use, and she can transcribe that stuff into the computer, so it's a, a permanent printed-out document, but then it still stores the recording in the computer, so we already have that system.
I'm talking about video recording, where you could actually televise the meetings then.
We don't have that capability, so.
We can, we can use the front conference room, we don't need to use the bench here, we have the capability in the other room, there's a camera there, and we could statically set it up to record the room, and we would probably, we would do that raw, and then they, they could, we'd have to work out a schedule, remember, we don't own the time our meetings broadcast, we hitchhike. But I'm sure I could work out a time slot if they wanna have a discussion with their board about what they wanna do, and I'll, I'll work with Terry on it.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Addy?
Good morning Commissioners, Don Addy, four five eight Florida Avenue, Junior Vice Commander, DAV Twenty, and also Chairman of Fundraising and Financing Valor Home. I've got concerns also, like Sam does, and a lot of other veterans and that, but the way we're being represented there at the Veterans Commissions is not right. There, people are hiding stuff, people are having meetings without consulting the rest of the veterans or making it public out there. Just yesterday, we asked and knocked on the door for the meeting and that, and said we weren't having a meeting, we were just in there talking. And then turn around and then put in the minutes there that they were going over litigation for Mr. Childers and that. That's just a tip of the iceberg of the stuff that we get. Now, when the meetings used to start, back when we first started going, they used to have an executive board meeting, and then they would break and then go into a, a general meeting. Or then they turned it around, then all of a sudden we're having a general meeting, then we're breaking and we're going back in an executive meeting, and that'd be the end of it, we'll see ya. So, we got that turned around and that, so now it's flip-flopped back to the way it was again. And as far as the outreach out there for veterans and that, it's not there. We're the ones that implicated, the two-hundred-and-seventy-some dollars that was being spent last year on advertisement and that, was a drop in the bucket, that don't even get outside of Lorain, it's that kinda money. You wanna spend some money, we got some money, let's get some outreach out there, let's put four or five grand, six grand, eight grand into advertising, take a full spread out in both papers and that, light this up so veterans can see. Sure, there's still gonna be some veterans that ain't gonna get it, ain't gonna get the message, or maybe not even concerned, but that ain't the point, the point is to get the outreach out there. And as far as showing up for meetings, representing your particular organization and that, it's not out there. We don't see 'em at the meetings and that. Unless we come to a meeting and that, that's how we find out most of our information. And this is, i- i- it's, it's just ridiculous, and they call this outreach. And I wanna ask one thing too, and I've been asking this since last year, and I had to ask it again yesterday, I asked it two meetings ago, to be a part of the budget to just see it. And I'm yet to see a budget since last year's budget. Well, it's already been sent in. So what? It's been sent in to you, but don't you have a copy? Can't we see it? It isn't public record? You, they work for us. We don't work for them, they work for us. And in turn, they try to twist stuff around and let us know, "Well, you know what, we can't do that because the county commissioner's not gonna allow it, county commissioners ain't gonna do this." That's bull, because you made us understand that all you do is review the budget.
Correct, that is our.
And as long as it's a viable and a legal situation for a veteran, okay, then it has to be approved. Now, I asked for money, and you just got done saying it here earlier in the meeting, how they mentioned that they wanna have, uh, promote this and promote that, and we'll, you know, we'll take care of the food, and we'll do this and that and everything, right? Okay? Well, last year, we had a fundraiser, okay, to raise money for the Valor Home, a golf outing, okay? That was a viable situation to help veterans and their families, correct? They tell me this year now, after we're down like a week and a half away from the event, we can't do that. We don't have no money. I've looked everywhere in the fifty-nine oh one, and I can't find anywhere in there where you can have money. Well, you ain't gonna find it in the fifty-nine oh one. It's simple, as long as it's a legal and viable situation, it can be approved. Not only tell us they ain't got no money for, for a fundraiser, you know, to hold this, to outreach to the community, to bring in money for the Valor Home to help veterans. When, when I know for a fact everything was good when this was mentioned two months ago and that, and then it comes right up to the end of the wire and that, and then tell us that we don't have the money, when I know clearly it's nothing but a payback.
See, Don, I don't know, again, we defer to legal, and like I did earlier, not to walk away from it, we don't revise a legal budget, so that would be what their outreach program they've decided to do.
Is, are they saying it's not a legal expenditure? Is that why they're saying they can't help with the fundraiser?
Well, I asked a question, maybe Mr. Stone could ask this, I asked, "Who made this decision?" 'Cause I'm assuming it came from you, or it wasn't gonna work? No, he says we did it within the board.
Right, would be a board action, it's not a county commissioner action, Don.
Well, how did this change from last year in the years in the past? Even when things were funded through jobs and family services to hold promotion or outreach at LCC? Was paid out of that same situation, but now it isn't.
That's.
Jerry, I see you're shaking your head when I come up.
It'd be up to the, the board.
Not being abreast of what they did last year, I was told by my, my Commissioners that that is not allowed because it doesn't, according to our financial assistance or our other programs, does not meet the need of one individual veteran. It's, it's meeting the needs of a group that's trying to raise money. And that's, that's what I was told, so that was the information I passed on to Mr. Addy.
Is that correct, Jerry?
If, if that's correct, I'm not positive.
I'm not gonna express a legal opinion without knowing all the details.
Okay.
Sorry, I just don't wanna do that.
I understand it, Jerry, you can't put you in that position, you don't know everything about it. Thanks, Terry.
Yeah, going back to the, the records request that they put in for the budget, did you, did you receive that?
I didn't get any formal request, they had asked me if they could see it, I didn't see a problem with it, and I was, you know, when we were still working on it, I was told, "No, you know, it, we haven't finished it yet, so."
No, it wasn't a completed document.
Wasn't completed, and I was, and we had it completed, which I was going to show, you know, presented the meeting yesterday, but we didn't have a quorum, we didn't have a meeting, so.
Okay, yeah, Don, if there's, you, they have to abide by public records request, if they have a complete docket or if it's emailed, then they would have to send that over to you. All you have to do is give a verbal request on it.
Correct.
And that's, so, just for future reference on it.
Right, but I, I don't, I don't understand his, his answer there, where they're going with that it's not for an individual veteran. This is for veterans in the county, period. It ain't, it don't have to be specifically for an individual veteran. They're talking about vouchers, or helping out an individual that comes in on a situation, whatever his problem might be. We're talking about a fundraiser, an outreach to help veterans, not Larry or Joe, this is for all veterans in the county here.
I would probably, and I'm not legal at all, I'm not saying legal, but from a board standpoint, they may say that's not how they best wanna use the money, Don, and that would be an objective overlook of how they wanna do something, whether we wanna do in-county transit or out-of-county transit, it's trans, but we make the decision on how it's gonna be used. That would be my guess, hearing what you're saying, it was done once under the past, it's not being done now, they may have changed their direction on how they're going to spend those dollars.
Right.
Okay, I mean, that's.
And that's the way it's been going for many years and that, they choose how to spend their dollars on veterans. And it ain't, it ain't about that, it's about all veterans. It's not about me, or Bob, or Terry, or Sam, or Joe, or Larry, anybody, it's about all veterans. They don't seem to get that, that they're working for us. But why we have to go there on a weekly basis and that, and buckheads and argue when you tried to sit down and have an intelligent conversation and share ideas and that, and if they don't like what they hear, they're saying, "Well, the hell with it," then meeting's adjourned, we're outta here. And that's the way it goes. In fact, Mr. Williams there had come and experienced a situation himself, and had to put them in check. I think we need to start logging all these sunshine violations and all these violations that they need to do, it's not only on recorder, but we thought of this a while back, of having these meetings publicly in here where you can videotape it and have the audio also. 'Cause there is just too much lip service here and nothing being done.
That's right, that's right.
So, we get rid of cool because we stand up and we fight for the veterans, not for ourselves, but for all veterans, and thinking about our veterans that are coming home, not just the ones that are here that done missed the boat on things that were available to 'em, because the knowledge was not out there. Had I known for eight years that I pounded the ground, everything from spaghetti dinners to going and sitting in front of storefronts, to put that memorial out there to honor ninety-eight men from this county that never got to do anything, again, never had a, a chance to have a family or do anything, and to know later on that I could've come to the county commissioner, I mean, Veterans Commission, and got some assistance with some of that, because of what we were trying to do, put 'em a memorial that's gonna be there forever, long after we're dead. And I could've got some assistance and that and didn't know that, because everybody's sitting in a comfort zone, happy with that paycheck and that, and will do the bare minimum. I, I, I just can't wrap my head around some of this stuff, it's, it's a damn shame that we gotta sit here and buckheads with veterans and that.
That's true, and, and you guys should be working together.
Exactly.
And, I, obviously, you have worked together, because as you and Sam both indicated, the, the amount of money that's being spent on the veterans, actual veterans, has increased because of you, right? The relief has gone up, that's what the, this whole program is all about, is helping veterans. And it, it was, what I said earlier was just, when I said before you, the cost of doing business for the Veterans Services was so high before, that more, more money was going... that more, more money was going to, to run the program than what was being given to the veterans. So, obviously, you guys working together is helping, and you might have a few hurdles that you have to get over, or some egos, or I don't know what the issues are, um, but you guys need to work together. That's the only way you're gonna help veterans, is by working together.
Exactly. And unfortunately, some people don't seem to get that. They'd rather buck the situation, argue about it, instead of sitting down and trying to work something out. We shut up a long time ago, coming to the meetings and that, and just listening, trying to act professional. We have to. You're not gonna get anywhere screaming, hollering, throwing shit around, and acting a fool. But I mean, it comes from all the way up in DC there, when President Obama made the remark on TV that the Vietnam veterans have done more in the past decade than they have in, I don't know how many years. And we wanna leave that legacy when we leave here, that the Vietnam veterans and that have made a big change, many changes, for our veterans, not only here today, but the ones that are coming behind us.
Right.
And you can't do that.
Terry, you wanted to respond to one of the comments you made though, so let's give equal time.
Thank you, and I, I do appreciate everything that, 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 uh, Mr. Addy has said. I guess my, uh, next request will probably be, uh, emailed or written and directed to Mr. Innis to make, to get some kinda legal opinion on to whether that expenditure is a legal expenditure of taxpayer money, and can we legally do that, and then what account would we take that out of? Cause currently, I do not see an account, you know, where that, that can legally be taken out of, but that's where I, I will request a, uh, an opinion from the prosecutor's office on that, and try to get it as soon as I can.
That's why we all have prosecutor's office and refer to the prosecutor for those type of questions, Terry.
Thank you, sir.
And that could've been something that's responded to those guys also, and what they asked, you could've said, we don't believe it's legal, let me ask the county prosecutor also. I mean, that is always, I mean, if you have some uncertainty in a decision. And it's been used before, I mean, the veterans have all met with Jerry over the years.
Right, but times of the essence now, so I'm gonna, when I get back to my office, I'll be sending you something over.
Yeah, I, I, um, a lot of it comes into the, the way you que- you write the question. Too, you know, if, if you're giving, are you asking, can we give money to the Valor Home for a fundraiser? Or can we use it for marketing of the Veterans Commission at the Valor Home, uh, golf outing?
Right.
Am I right in that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I don't want to say anything which indicates an answer to the specific issue, cause I really don't know the details of it, and as we all know, there can be little tiny nuances that make a difference. But as a general concept, the Veterans Service Commission, for that matter, the commissioners, are not permitted to fund another organization, and we went, we went over this with the uniform issue. The commissioners cannot give money, for instance, to the VFW, that's, you know, they can't give money to any charitable organization, no matter how, you know, outstanding or noble the cause. You know, you aren't allowed to take tax dollars and give it to another service organization. So, you know, the Veterans Service Commission is not allowed to fund the Valor Home, no matter how outstanding an institution that may be. So, that's where we get into servicing veterans versus, uh, organizations. And as Commissioner Williams just said, you know, it may be possible to do this as a part of their outreach function, but they cannot directly fund Valor Home or any other separate organization.
Does that help to some degree, Don? What Jerry just said there, I mean, maybe it was not being done.
Yeah, a little bit, but we're not asking, we're not asking for money to fund the Valor Home. We're asking you to support a function that is gonna support veterans.
Well, and it may be, it may be possible, Don, I just wanted to clarify that, cause it wa- we, we had that thing, we don't understand the difference between organization. Like I said, when I get the details of this, it may be very possible that we can do this.
And I asked, Terry, why can't we just look at the last year's records? Do you keep records on where the money went?
That doesn't necessarily mean that it was legal right then, though. I mean, I can understand some, you gotta look, he's the new director, okay, going through everything. I'm sure it was voluminous, so I mean, it's, you know, if it's a question, it's a question, but then we have, that's why we have the county prosecutor's office.
And, and what I'm kinda thinking, Jerry, is kinda like what we do with solid waste, as far as we support agencies through the marketing, uh, through solid waste dollars, so Terry, that's the way you may want to approach it.
Right, and up until now, we didn't have a marketing line item, we really didn't have it on our budget before, so that the question came up, where do you take that out of legally, you know?
Yeah, so if they're doing marketing, Don, for it, they're doing the outreach to the veterans who will be attending that golf outing, so.
I have another question too, uh, was, uh, seeing I didn't get to see the budget, was the, uh, was it put in the budget there to suggest possibly moving to the, the new site at the Valor Home? I mean, everybody was gung ho about, uh, man, we're all for the Valor Home, we're all for helping veterans, and da-da-da, this and that. And the big question or the hurdle seemed to be that, uh, there was not a viable or stable, uh, area suitable for that, uh, which was Saint Joe's, and it's, uh, you know, in, uh, dire need of repairs, and, uh, is it gonna be there in the long run, and da-da-da, and this and that? Now we got a bu- a building that's beautiful, in real good shape, we got space available and that, we got privacy, which doesn't get addressed, and everybody just seems to, you know, that just goes to the wayside. I mean, this has been a, a thorn in the side for I don't know how many years, but nobody seems to address it, I guess, until maybe we bring the media in and then put everybody on the spotlight and that, that this HIPAA law that's being, uh, you know, being violated and that. But yet, we got this facility over there, my question is, was it put in the budget?
No, sir, it was actually just removed for any rent.
Yeah, well, there you go.
Well, because, now, let me talk from the commissioner's side, cause we were all there trying to save the Saint Joe's facility, and we had said, if we can save the place, and Veterans Services wanted to move there, we would all agree to fund renting there. Well, Saint Joe's basically evaporated, and we wrote a check for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to get out of that deal.
Exactly. That we spent, we spent beaucoup hours and time and everything, two and legwork, going to Columbus to help both you, the county, and the city for your debt forgiven, right?
And we wrote the eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar check. We have since received a letter, though, from the Veterans Service Commission, looking at other facilities, but the county owns facilities that they could move into that doesn't cost us any rent.
Exactly.
So.
Well, you know what, I think, at least the way it looks to me, if this money comes out of your property tax, a percentage or a millage out of that property tax comes out of that, and it comes back this way here, and it's considered money to work with for veterans, and they submit a budget, okay? And say the budget is only one-point-five million, for number's sake, and you got three million coming, whatever, okay? That money's not used, that money goes back in, sits in the general fund there. But you say we can go back in at a later date, there is a shelf life on it, that we can get into that money again, which we weren't able to do last year, okay? But now, what I'm asking you is, you calling it taxpayers' money, right, that's how it started out, but it ended up veterans' money to work with and that. Why can't that balance of that money that isn't being used, or the rest of that, that may be needed down the road, why can't that be put into an escrow, or some type of a fund, or something that could be grabbed at later on?
Under Ohio Revised Code, you can have, the Veterans Service Commission can have up to half a mil.
Up to?
Up to half a mil of property tax, based on providing the services up to that half of a mil. Everything they submit, the commissioners can review, we have no ability to revise, but the Veterans Services Commission and their director understand what their allowances are, what they can and can't do with the money, and they do their best job of figuring out what they're going to spend or not spend. We don't know how many guys coming back from Afghanistan, so they have a certain number put in there, Don. And then it reverts back to general, cause it is a general fund money. If you look at, and speaking with my budget director today, if you look at your property taxes, you see a general fund amount, you see Lorraine County Community College MRDD, your local school district. There's not a veterans' line item on your property tax that says a half a mil. It comes out of what Lorraine County's inside millage is, up to half a mil to provide those veterans' services. So it's what can be spent, and after that, it reverts every year, everybody's money comes back to the general fund, that's how we get a carryover. Do you understand that?
Right, right, I understand.
It's not a bank account, or a savings account, it's to provide the services, taxpayers' dollars, and it rolls right back into the general fund for reapropriation. By law, the commissioners have to do the veterans' budget in June of the prior year. And that's why we're holding a hearing day. Everybody else's budget we do in November and December, but by law, we do the veterans' budget in June. So they know what they can expect for next year's allocation, and the services they're gonna perform, and I'm sure whatever they have to do, they've got boatloads of paperwork to fill out. So that's, that's how it works by law, Don.
Okay, so then what do we need to do? Do we need to create a levy?
To do what?
To, to, to be able to use the money, or have the money, to have it on hand?
You would have to have a separate entity, yeah, whatever you're gonna do, no different than you did with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, I mean, you could have a, you know what I'm saying, that would be a separate veterans' issue, and you guys would decide how you allocate it.
Well.
There's no inside millage available to set aside to put the veterans on your tax duplicate.
I think he wants to have a levy to give more money, correct?
Which he could do, that could be done by substance.
But if they're a, if they come out, they're, uh, increasing their marketing campaign, and if they're able to service more veterans, and then they come back to us and they say, well, you know, we're servicing veterans, under the Ohio Revised Code, we need more money for the service of the veterans, they can get up to that half inside mil, about three, uh, three million dollars. So, it's just, you know, the Veterans Commission going out, and the employees there, trying to service more, um, veterans, and to be able to utilize that money. And we talked about this, I don't know if you wanna go out and get another levy if they're not really spending the inside millage that they have today, Don.
Well, it would give them more flexibility.
It would give you more flexibility.
And how the expenditures of dollars are, right now, you are, I wouldn't say handcuffed, but you were ruled by what the Ohio Revised Code allows, fifty-nine oh one, and that says what can and cannot be done, sorta like you can't give to another organization, or you can't buy, let's say, and finish.
Alright.
Or you can't buy uniforms for, you know, the honor guards.
Oh, I, I understand that, yeah.
That would be a levy that would do a lot of those wide-open things.
I understand that, all the veterans post throughout the county, that you hold fundraisers, uh, donations, whatever, they raise their own. I got one other question, then I'm, I'm, uh, I'll let somebody else have a stand here. Was the new vehicles that were purchased and that, were they first turned over to the VA in Cleveland? Before licensing?
We, we can't answer that, that would be, we, that would have to be answered by Mr. Stone. You're talking about the program with the gas hearing and so forth.
Right.
Be a program.
Were the, were the vehicles that were purchased, the new ones, were they first turned over to the VA before they were licensed?
Terry, you gotta come up to the.
The two mini van, I'm not sure. Those were there before I got there.
Well, the way the process works is.
Don, Don, Terry, you've gotta come up and speak too. We're doing this publicly and it's being televised, sorry, you guys gotta co-star together.
Learning experience.
Right.
Yeah, the, the two vans that were, the mini vans we used for Lorraine County were purchased in there before I took over. Uh, the bus that we currently just got, uh, last month, I know that's a county-owned vehicle. Why it would go through the VA, I don't know.
Well, there was, there was a fuel program.
Look, yeah, you know, if I've got this right, Mr. Cortez.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
By turning these vehicles over to the VA, they flip-flop them back to yous, okay? They're in their name, they flip them back to us, okay? And the reason for that is, is because now that they own them and turn them back over to us, we do not pay any maintenance, fuel, any kinda expenses on that vehicle. It doesn't come out of none of our money, they pick it all up. If you don't do that ahead of time, you know who's got all the cost? Yous do.
And I, and I think that we, we, a part of our agreement, I thought we paid the driver and they took care of the, the vehicle costs, as you indicated. But I, I, I couldn't tell you if that happened or not, I remember the program, though.
Well, it might be something you wanna look into, because it's, it's dipping in our pocket when, when the VA Brexville, or I mean Wade Park would've picked up all the cost.
Well, I think Mr. Stone's gonna answer the question before I get the information, he's writing it down, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Don.
Morning.
Good morning.
Jesse Hill, five oh four Wayne Street, ten seventy nine, VFW ten seventy-nine, NAVES Chapter seventy-four, DAV forty-nine. Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, yesterday, we was at the, well, we went for the meeting and everything, and I'm not gonna rehash what Sam and, uh, Don have already said, but we did not have a meeting.
Jesse, can you speak up just a little bit?
Sure, sure, okay.
You're kinda tall, you're hard to catch.
Hit that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Anyway, I said I'm not gonna rehash what was done, and, uh, Sam had said about the meeting and everything yesterday, that we showed up at the meeting. But a question that do have is, um, how did the Veterans Service Commissioner authorize a budget with only Mr. Childrens, Mr. Mackens, Judah Hobart, and Terry Stone? Now, I heard, um, Mr. Innis state that, um, they requested Mr. Childrens because of the past, and he had helped with the budget. Well, that is not the, uh, response that we got yesterday. The response that we received yesterday from Mr. Stone was, Mr. Children just happened, happened to be in the building, and they brought him in. Um, the next question I have for Mr. Innim, Innim, uh, back in February, you was at the, um, meeting, I mean, before, before the meeting, you was in there with the Veterans Service Commissioners. Uh, they came out for the regular meeting. Uh, Mr. Mackens stated at that time that, um, we would no longer have the, um, commissioners' meeting beforehand, and come into the general meeting. Uh, and he stated that you said that that was illegal, what they were doing. And at that time, the Veterans Service Commissioner, Bob Macken, got up and said, the next meeting will start at one-thirty, and he's also said, and we'll be outta here by two o'clock, just like that. Um, I guess my question is, why is that illegal to have a meeting like that? He said that you said it, and, uh, we, uh, kinda dumbfounded by it, but the most grievous thing that he did was, they never did contact anyone, and to my knowledge, did not put anything, uh, no advertising out, letting it know that the, uh, uh, meeting had been changed. And, uh, even if they did, there's still not enough time, because they had the meetings on the first and the third Tuesday. And so the two just revert back, within two weeks' time, I think that was totally inappropriate.
Thanks, Jesse. Sam, again?
I have a question.
Yes, I'll make it short and quick.
Sam, I, I have a question, I'm, I'm confused, I've been taking some notes. Alright, Tuesday, or yesterday, there was supposed to be a meeting, right?
Yes.
There was no meeting?
No.
Did they go into executive session?
No.
No.
Okay, so there's no decision made yesterday on anything with the group?
No.
Okay, alright.
No, yesterday, what occurred, uh.
Hang on, Sam, Jesse wants to say something real quick.
Yeah.
Finish this comment.
Just wanna address what Mr. Williams said about what there he meeting. From my understanding, well, like Sam had said, Mr. Macken stormed out, and he told the Secretary of Marketing, Martha, that she could stay there and record everything. From my understanding, uh, what happened after we left is, uh, Mr. Macken, Mr. Dickerson, Mr. Childrens, and I believe Mr. Stone went into a meeting after we, uh, exited the property.
So there was no official meeting, there was no quorum, so they adjourned, they didn't have a meeting. But then two board members met with Mr. Stone and Mr. Childers, which doesn't violate sunshine law, because there wasn't a majority, correct, Jerry? I just wanna make sure we're stating everything straight, Jesse, just as you're saying it, I wanna make it clear.
Well, no, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that that was a violation of the sunshine law.
Okay, alright.
I, I didn't, no, I didn't say that it was a viol- I'm just saying that, to my understanding, that those gentlemen met after that meeting, but like Sam said, now, he stormed out when we, now, Mr. Stone did stay there, Mr. Stone and Mr. Dickerson stayed there, you know, were just voicing out of concern, just trying to hash out some things and stuff like that. But he didn't have the, he, he didn't have decency to stay and address the issues with us, but after we left, then they got, they get together, have their little pow-wow.
Well, you're allowed to talk to each other, you just can't make a decision.
Yeah, we understand that, yeah, we understand that.
Alright, yeah, I just wanted.
Clearly, the lines of communication have eroded to the point where it's hard for us to understand actually what is going on. And it becomes somewhat of a frustrating situation, because historically, I thought we were all on the same page, which is to help veterans. And Laura, you brought up a wonderful word that nobody has used just during this whole time, ego. ego. You know, we need to take the egos out of the equation and remember that our prime purpose and our goal is to helping out our fellow veterans. And I have a simple question for you, Jerry. You said that, you told Mr. Childers, he asked you a question, right? And you said that on his last day that you couldn't represent him. Is that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm saying if you, being the consummate professional that I believe you to be, you could have answered Mr. Childers' question at the time he asked it, but instead, yesterday, you guys are having a meeting and you tell me that you told him yesterday, "Well, you couldn't represent him anymore," right? Is that what you was, is that what you told me?
Follow up with complete explanation.
Yeah. But I mean, put yourself in the mindset of our fellow veterans. I mean, when Don, like, and I hate, I hate to keep harping on the Don Bates situation, but it's still relative to all of this because, like I said, when Don was relieved of dis- Mr. Harvey, you want to put it, from his position, then he wasn't privy to anything. And when you say about, "Well, you guys have private meetings," no, I don't have any private meetings. I like to keep everything above board so there is no smack of dishonesty or any type of deceit whatsoever. I mean, I don't see Don walking around in the Veteran Service Commission and he surely was just as knowledgeable as anybody that's sitting in there today. I don't see anybody calling him in, asking him for advice. So I mean, you know, when you, when you guys tell us stuff like this, we absorb it, we process it, but it, it doesn't sound right because when it's applied to another situation, it's not applied actually. Because I mean, Mr. Childers has, you know, he has free run of the building, but he is now just a private citizen and a veteran like me. And yesterday, oh, I must finish with this. So yesterday, when we said, "Well, you know, Commissioner Stone," or whatever his title is, "You know Bob Childers in your office." You know what his reply was? So cavalierly, he said, "Well, maybe I should have closed my door." So I mean, statements like this, behavior like this, tends to erode our confidence in our so-called leaders in the veterans community. That's all I have to say. I mean, I hope that we stint, that the next time they have a meeting, they have it here like you have suggested in an open forum on videotape.
Thanks, Sam. Mr. Pichoni, welcome to the meeting. Got to tell us who you are and where you live at, though.
Rick Pichoni, I live on West Ridge Road in Amherst Township. Before I get to the veterans, speaking of that, you guys approved the work on that bridge on West Ridge Road? You know, they have West Ridge North shut down, you can't go over the Turnpike Bridge?
Okay.
Yesterday, a railroad train that stopped there for about 15 minutes to get out of my road, I had to go down a gravel road to Murray Ridge to get out. Hopefully, we don't need a 901, you know, a 911 call there. So that's something to get with Norfolk and Western. What I'm here for, really, and this is the first time, this is Mr. Ennis, um, everybody knows my work in the veteran community, and, uh, I don't go around talking, bothering anybody. I just, I just keep doing. I was down there, uh, when Terry first got the job, one day, I, I went down there to talk to Geraldine about a situation with a veteran from my post. After I talked to Geraldine, I'm talking to Terry.
Who's Geraldine?
Geraldine is an investigator.
Okay, that's, you're, you're saying somebody should tell what they do, Rick, so the public-
Geraldine has been down there for years. She's an investigator for the, uh, Veteran Service Commission. Uh, while I was talking to Terry, I, you know, I was sitting down there, this new employee walked by, Martha Guru, I guess is how you pronounce it, and Terry introduced me to her, and, and we had a little bit of conversation and it was, it was, you know, kind of incidental, BS, and, you know, like, like, like we would, you know, you go off in different, different motives, you know, directions and that. Well, about a, a month later, I get this, uh, letter from Lorraine County Veteran Service Commission written by Mr. Childers, and it was concurred to the prosecutor's office, and it, it stone amazed me. I mean, it sucked the wind out of me. I couldn't sleep for three days. And it, it, you know, I was, it's addressed as racial slurs towards this girl and, and a whole bunch. She wrote a one-page letter. And I, I couldn't believe what, what she accused me of based on the conversation we had. And what really bothered me and upset me the most, this was, uh, the incident took place on the 8th of February. This was dated the 22nd of February, giving me seven days to respond, and I, it was postmarked the 12th of March. So when I got this and read it, I mean, my, my, you know, inside, my insides was gone. And, you know, so I, 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 I called Mr. Childers, who was on vacation, I believe, in Mexico?
Yeah.
New Mexico. And he said, "Well, just write, write a response," and all that, and, um, truthfully, I, I was really upset, so I went down and saw Sam Batunis at the Legion and talked about it. And when Sam read this letter and the verbiage was used and the way I was attacked, Sam couldn't, couldn't believe it. And even Sam said, "I don't know why Mr. Childers wrote the letter with Mr. Macken being the chairman of the, the commission." You know, so at any rate, I wrote a response to the letter. Did you get a response, my written response? Were you able to read it?
I don't recall that I did. I may have, but I don't recall it.
But at any rate, a matter this serious, it, it sucked the wind out of me. I, I've been the parade marshal in Loria for years. I did not go down there. I haven't got an answer to my rebuttal letter to this girl, so Rick Pichoni's not going to go down to Lorraine Veteran Service, uh, anymore because I, you know, I don't know if this matter's settled. You know, they're talking about lines of communication. I mean, uh, I'm going to read this letter and you, you think what you think. And it's dated to me, it's addressed to me, dated February 22nd. It's derogatory racial attack on veteran service administrative assistant, Mr.-
Around Cleveland, Lorraine, the entire state actually, to get funding and support for the Valor Home. Because we know that it's going to be a wonderful project. I mean, Commissioner Williams and I used to go round and round about St. Joe's, and, you know, I come to realize that, you know, sometimes we get blinded by our passions because actually, it wasn't the right location. But I mean, I didn't want to hear that back then, and at least I'm the first to be humbled myself and say that I know that my passion for this project, you know, overwhelmed my reasoning behind it. But now that I look back over the whole thing, you know, hey, I'm the first to say that, you know, I was wrong.
Your heart was in the right place.
You got a great building now, though.
Yes, we do.
It's a different facility. It doesn't matter what the bricks were.
And bad, as I hate to say it, I even like Commissioner Williams now.
I want a video of this.
There's a video. We'll get you a copy. They're five bucks. Hi, Barb.
Hello, Commissioners. I have one brief question. My name is Barbara Gersna. I'm at 2853 Jaycocks in Avon. And, um, my only question is of the, um, you said that we had .5 mil available for veteran services?
Up to .5 of the inside millage-
Okay.
That the county receives.
Which is like 3 million.
Okay.
Which totals about 3 million dollars.
Okay, that was, I was going to ask you what the difference was, but I got my, I have my answer now.
Half a mil equals 3 million.
Okay, so we're looking at about, uh, 130,000 or something that-
A million three difference between what's being allocated-
Okay.
And what would be totally available for providing services to veterans, correct?
And if viable programming were to come before the commission, could that be approved?
Only if it was within 5901.
To service veterans.
And they could show that it was actually being used for those proper lawful reasoning.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
Most of what 50, uh, 5901 covers is grave markers, grave sites, plots, you know, paying for indigent, um-
Assistance, transportation.
Assistance for, um, veterans that don't have the means to, to pay for those things.
All right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, mostly indigent. That's where a lot of the issues-
Right, mostly indigent.
Because the rest, the veteran service officers that I understand, that they then help set those guys up with the programs that are available from the VA and other entities.
Okay.
That doesn't necessarily come out of that dollars on direct help.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Hi, Bob.
I was going to say good afternoon. I think it might be by now, but-
Two more minutes, two more minutes.
At any rate, I just want to say a few words to my, oh, I'm sorry, Bob Childers, 255 Harrison Street, Illyria, Ohio. Just a few words for my concerned veterans. Some historical information in reference to my application for veteran services. I just want everyone to know that I filed three times over 15 years for the opportunity to be chosen in veteran services. I didn't get it the first time, I didn't get it the second time. It took that long. In regards to Mr. Addy-
You, you can, they're, they're going to see you, so you don't have to face them.
Oh, thank you. In regards to Mr. Addy, he applied once to my knowledge. The judge at the time felt I was doing a fine job. That is why he reappointed me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Are we done with that? Anyone else wishing to address, address the board in regards to any issue other than the Veteran Service Commission?
I just want to add.
Or funding?
Commissioner, there were just a couple of questions I feel ought to be addressed.
Okay, you ready to answer?
Again, to explain what happened in these last two meetings, once again, Mr. Childers and Mr. Macken met with me on Friday. At that time, they were both my clients. Several questions were asked similar to what you saw here today. People asked me a lot of questions and I give a tentative answer and I say, "I need to get some more information before I can give you a firm answer." And that's, that's what I gave them that day with the idea I would come back on Tuesday and respond to the board. Um, as a result of what I later found out, quite frankly, I had to change some of the answers I gave to both Mr. Macken and Mr. Childers. I felt not only a legal, but a moral obligation to correct the answers I gave to him, and that's the only thing I did on Tuesday, other than to say that I could no longer represent him. So that's the only dialogue I had with Mr. Childers. We did not discuss any substantive issues regarding, um, board action. Now, I did have a conversation with Mr. Macken in which I also corrected the things and gave him more firm answers, and that's what happened. Okay? Um, yeah, I met with my staff in the morning to discuss how we were to proceed. Uh, and just some background with things, you folks know, these issues with the Veterans Commission have been going on for three years. I represent the Board of Commissioners and I represent the Veterans Commission when they were at loggerheads. Uh, subsequent to that, I represented Mr. Bates for two, three, I don't know how many years you were there, Don, and I worked with him. You know, it becomes very difficult when somebody you work with is removed and Mr. Bates is removal is a problem for me. Same thing then happened with Mr. Childers. I began to work with Mr. Childers for a year or two now, and now he is removed. Uh, you know, I continue to work with situations in which the people who are my clients change. Um, I try to handle those things with courtesy and respect to the people that, uh, are being removed, even though they're removed. I tried to exhibit that kind of courtesy and professional respect to Mr. Childers, and that was the extent of our conversation. Going back to what the gentleman asked about February, same kind of thing. I was at a meeting with, uh, the board, several questions and issues were brought up. Same kind of thing is here. I got different versions of what was happening so that I couldn't give a firm answer. So what I told them to do is I thought the best thing to do was to start with your general meeting at the start and then proceed, just as I always take the safe haven approach to things. And I said, "I'm not exactly sure because I'm getting different versions of what had been going on." So I recommended that as this is a surefire, safe way to proceed. So that's why I recommended that. Going back to, uh, Don, with your, uh, your questions about the tax proceeds, you know, I think maybe what we ought to do is look at meeting with our legislators and try to get a dedicated tax for the Veterans Commission because that would answer all those problems. Because this millage that is set aside for the veterans is, is not like when we vote for mental health or MRDD, you see a ballot on the levy that says, "This amount of money for MRDD," or "This amount of money for mental health." Then that money goes to that organization, it's theirs to use, it's theirs to decide what they do with it, and nobody else can touch that. That doesn't happen with the veterans, and maybe if the legislation was changed so that that kind of levy were possible, we could get around all this. I don't know why that's happened, other than, uh, you know, I, I know you folks through some of the things you've seen, these kind of disputes have been going on now for 15, 20 years, and for some reason, nobody has directly addressed this. Um, you know, the laws that are out there, and we've talked about this before, were enacted, you know, after World War II in the 50s, and they are just out of date. They need to be looked at, you know, and I agree totally, you know, you folks should get money that you can decide with how to do so that we don't have to go through all these belabored processes. But, you know, that's, that's neither your Veteran Services Commission or the Commissioners or for me to change. You know, we need to sit down with our legislators and, and get this squared away so these kinds of things can happen. And, you know, I invite you to contact the prosecutor's office. You know, Mr. Will, uh, is a veteran, and I know Mr. Corey has worked intimately with you folks and your organizations and, you know, we would be happy to discuss with you any of your concerns.
I just want to add on that. Jared, we actually had a good meeting with, um, one of the Illyria posts and Senator Manning to actually go over some of that discussion. Um, I believe, Sam, you weren't able to make that one, but, uh, I believe you got copied on that. So Senator Manning is actually looking into it and trying to get some type of support through the Senate to see what she could do to open that up for additional spending for veterans.
Anyone else wishing to address the board this morning? I'll make a motion to move an executive seat this afternoon. Motion to move into executive session is outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
I'll second.
Mr. Calo.
Hi.
Ms. Kaski.
Hi.
Thank you. Good conversation today, guys.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioner's General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Illyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda. This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, two-twenty-six Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.